Mr. Dermott?
Here.
Mr. Wiganley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Ferry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Radel?
Here.
All present?
All present, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas across our county and here in the county of Luzerne, domestic violence traumatizes victims, endangers children, harms families, affects workplaces, threatens communities, and crosses all racial, social, economic, and cultural boundaries. And whereas it is the whole of the county of Luzerne to reduce the incidence and effects of domestic violence on its citizens and to increase public awareness of this problem. And whereas the county of Luzerne urges all citizens to recognize the epidemic of domestic violence and to join in support of the programs which help alleviate domestic violence. And whereas the county of Luzerne supports the coordinated and knowledgeable response to instances of domestic violence by first responders, service providers such as Domestic Violence Service Center and the criminal justice system. Now therefore we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby acknowledge the problem of domestic violence, appreciate the difficult yet outstanding work which responders accomplish in fighting the problem, urge all residents of Luzerne County to be aware of the problem of domestic violence and its impact in our daily lives, and proclaim the month of October in the year of 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Luzerne County. Thank you. Any deletions from the voting session agenda?
I'll post that as a priority agenda.
Motion by Mr. Lombardo, second one.
Just a point of order. I'd like to make a motion going in, second session to or at least add it to the agenda.
Yeah, here you go.
Yes.
I say I just wanted to make a motion to put the, put an executive session on the agenda.
So should we add that first?
We can do that.
Okay. All right, so we have an addition to it, executive session. Do you still first and second?
Yes.
The adoption? Okay. Sorry, you and second.
A motion.
Is that okay with the executive session on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, okay, Steve made the motion to put the executive session on. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second for that.
I make a motion that we have a recess to do that.
I'll say.
Wait, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, abstentions, opposed, that's to add it. So now can we adopt the agenda with it? And then can we make that motion? Is that okay?
Yeah, I make a motion to have a recess to do that at this time. We didn't adopt it.
Before we adopt the agenda? Can we adopt the agenda first, please? And then we'll make a motion.
I made a motion for that too.
Okay, motion, okay, great. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Adopting the agenda with the executive session on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed. Agenda is adopted with the executive session. Now we have a motion to enter.
Go to the executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed. Council's gonna recess to executive.
Recording stopped.
Well, except that shit at the booth. Well, you did it.
That's why I have a program.
Oh, he's not here.
Yeah.
All right.
So.
Kevin, you with us?
Yes.
We have a motion to come back from recess.
I move that we're back from recess for the executive session.
On favor?
I agree.
Recording in progress.
I think it was, I think it was going to launch.
Oh, did you read it?
Sure.
All favor? A sentence opposed. All right, back for recess.
I make a motion that we make an amendment to the agenda.
Sure, I think Mr. Robertson wanted to say something first.
Okay, sorry.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For those of you in the audience, I'm Randy Robertson, the county manager. I've been here five months. I came from Colorado, and when I came from Colorado, I made it, tried to make it crystal clear, I had some family issues. And since that time, my mother's, I'm still blessed to have my mother. But since that time, she's been diagnosed with Alzheimer's. She fell down a flight of stairs, she nearly died, and I'm still blessed to have her. And then on top of that, about a month ago, my wife had a surgery that didn't quite go the way it was supposed to have gone. And we were back in the operating room again this week. So I have posed to the council, and I appreciate the tolerance of the council, that at this point in time, as I told them from the very moment I got here from Colorado, that my family comes first, that I thought it would be in the best interest to move on with that and sometime after the first year or sometime in the not too distant future, get through the budget, start into the calendar year, to move, to offer my resignation, and I afforded them an opportunity to see if they are interested in me consulting on some basis, if they wish, that's up to them, in terms of trying to find a replacement and any other things they have going. And I wanted to make that tonight, I, like I said, a no firm date, sometime within the next month or two, by the first of the year. If that's what the council deems worthy. It's become obvious to me that I can't do my family obligations continuing to, and do this. And so I think it's in their best interest and my best interest to move along. And I just would say, I think we've made tremendous inroads, particularly in child and youth services and the human services, which we'll plan out next year, that I hope will be very pleased with if everything comes into fruition. So with that, ma'am, I don't think I have anything else to offer at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Now, we make an amendment to the agenda. Move that one item you're making.
Go ahead.
Move the one item on the grant, in the work session to the voting session, because we have a deadline of November 16th in order to apply for it. So you won't meet again in the voting session past that deadline, so you have to move.
That's a motion to move number three, from the work session to the voting session. Second.
Second.
Okay. It will be number four. Okay, so we had a motion and a second and a vote to adopt the agenda the way it was. Do we still have that motion and the second to adopt it with this amendment?
Yes.
On favor? A sentence opposed. Okay, it's adopted with this new item. We now have public comment on the voting session agenda. Some of these slips don't have whether or not it's voting, so I'll just go through them. And if, if it's not on a voting item, just let me know. Brian Outer, Dwyer.
It's outside, interesting.
Can they hear me all time, okay? Okay, Brian Dwyer, voting agenda or?
I'm here.
Is it on a, is it on an agenda item?
Yes, it's on voting.
That's not on the agenda.
All right, well, why?
I'll get to it later.
Yeah, all right.
I'm sorry, they weren't marked, okay. Bob McMillan, also not.
That's outside, that's on voting as well.
That's not, okay. This is a non-agenda. Sorry, bear with me, there's a lot of flesh. T.J. Fitzgerald? Agenda item or non-agenda item? I think he yelled "non-agenda." Okay. Thanks. All right, anybody for an agenda item? All right, doesn't look like we have any comment on the agenda items. So moving on, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 23rd? On favor?
Aye.
A sentence opposed?
No.
Minutes are adopted. Motion to approve the minutes of the November 1st.
Motion, yes.
On favor?
Aye.
A sentence opposed?
No.
All right, number three, we have a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Loser and County and Loser and County domestic relations.
Motion.
Roll call. Mr. McGinnley and Mr. Timmons.
Mr. Venus? Yes.
Mr. Lewis Scavitch?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Radel? Yes. Motion passes, number four, will be from the work session, the discussion regarding the resolution authorizing an application for the 2022 Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities Grant Program.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second on the discussion. I think Mr. Jones is going to talk about that.
Good evening, members of council. Can you hear me?
Oh, you don't want to, don't talk into it that much, they're really, they're really testing. Thank you.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Very quickly, staff is asking your permission this evening to seek a grant. This grant would enable us to afford to pay a expert consulting firm to help us develop the hazard mitigation plan update that we believe is due by the end of 2025. This may seem like something you remember we recently completed. We did finish a plan at the end of 2020. The plan is essential for us to maintain the eligibility for our communities to be able to obtain FEMA grants for hazard mitigation, pre and post disaster. That would include money that we seek to mitigate, prevent, or mitigate damage from flooding. And so we completed the hazard mitigation plan in 2020 to maintain our community's eligibility. According to federal law, the plan is supposed to be updated every five years for their communities to maintain their eligibility. So our new plan would be due in September of 2025. The plans routinely take about three years to develop from the beginning of applying for a grant to securing a consulting firm to help expedite the project of working with county staff, to completing the project and securing all of various government approvals, including approvals from FEMA. So we're laying the groundwork for this project and seeking your permission to secure this grant, to at least apply for this grant. In my discussions with officials at PMA and FEMA, we have a strong likelihood of award for this grant. The project I envision would be roughly $100,000, and we would contribute $25,000 worth of county staff in-kind services, which would be billable hours that the staff works towards helping to coordinate the 2025 hazard plan. And the remaining $75,000 would be a state and federal grant contribution from FEMA and PMA that we would net as a county, that we could throw at paying for the consultant for their services to help make sure that we get the right kind of plan that has all the essential components that FEMA requires for us to expedite and complete that project. So the materials are here in front of you. If you have any questions, I'm available. But I would urge you to consider approving this, our permission to seek this award. And if, and if you do, we will immediately pursue the grant, which the application, they only give us a two-and-a-half-week window to, to apply for this. And so as soon as the final details came out, I rushed this to Mr. Robertson and to Chairwoman Radel to make sure that we had an opportunity to get your permission to try to go for this funding.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Jones. Does anybody have any question? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, you already had it?
Yeah. We, we had one, we have, we got it, thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Radel? Yes. Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, council.
Number five, with number four, a motion to approve Act 13 grant funding amount for 2022, 2023.
So we'll, second.
Want me to read it up?
Yes, so it's the conservative estimate of available funds of $100,000.
Right, the fund balance is actually 161,000. But the definition of available funds, 100,000. Yeah. Nice seconds.
Yeah, please. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Barton?
Yeah.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Before you put upon that, I just want to mention the executive session.
Yes, as you know, we had a step up the executive session that concerned personal.
Thank you. All right, we have public comment on non-agenda items. First on the list, I have Deborah Jordan.
Hello, my name is Deborah Jordan, Sugarloaf Township, Pennsylvania. I'd just like to say I was a poll worker yesterday, and it was not a very good day. We were very close to running out to paper. We got down to the single digits. I heard from my coworkers who were at other polls, they did run out. We had people outside lined up. They weren't happy. They were, you know, you heard things of like voter suppression and all kinds of things in Luzerne County and the election bureau and the election board. And as the poll worker, we tried to calm everybody down. Rest assured, they were getting notifications on their phones, et cetera. So I would just like to say, when I, when I was working full time, I had to make sure everything was in order for my job. I had to have supplies pre-ordered. I had to have backups. I had to make sure my staff was well-equipped and scheduled. I have to say that unless the election bureau didn't get the memo that there was going to be an election yesterday, they totally failed. It was, you know, no paper, no provisional ballots that places staff putting into judge of election positions at the last minute. Luckily, they did their civic duty. So I don't want to be here, you know, I tried to be a proud Luzerne County constituent, and I don't want to add to the black eye that we may or may not have right now. But I would really say, you know, as sad as it was to see all that, one of the saddest things that I saw was an elderly gentleman came with his wife's mail in. She was wheelchair-bound. Well, we were told when we called that we couldn't accept the ballot, and they would have to drive it up to Penn Place with her. So wouldn't you know, about an hour or so later, this man comes back with his wife in her wheelchair. You know, it was it was sad. When they got there, they said, you still, you know, we can't take the ballot even though your wife is here. We called the election bureau a couple of times. Every time we called, we got like a different answer. So in addition to not having supplies and not having workers, they also didn't have the procedural things in order as well. And we actually did turn away voters from voting because of problems with mail-ins and, you know, things like that, that we didn't have the proper answer. And when we called, we have the proper answer, we still couldn't get it. So, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know, like being firsthand in front of all this, it was not a good day. And just so you're aware, and I hope you guys, you know, take the right steps going forward as Luzerne County Council, along with the Board and the Bureau of Elections to rectify this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
J.B. Walsh.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. I'd like to start out by saying that the integrity of our election in Luzerne County the second year in a row has been sacrificed. This is unacceptable. Currently, we have ways to vote absentee, military, mail-in, drop box, in-person, provisional ballots, whatever they were filling out at the place when they ran out yesterday, when they ran out of paper. To let you know how far far spread this was in our county, Kingston Rec, Fairview, Cunningham Township, Hanover, Lake Township, Salem Township, Harvey's Lake, Union Township, Exeter, Wilkes-Barre, Wyoming Borough, West Wyoming, Huntington, Hazelton, Swiersville, West Hazelton, Hunlock Township, Dallas, Jenkins, Pittston Township, Pittston, Cordale, 44, Jackson, Dennison, Dorance, Fairmont, Dirrie, Dallas Township, Kingston, and Larksville, all experienced issues with lack of paper, procedural issues, jammed machines, machine shredding ballots. There was no pre-work done to make sure this election went off without a hitch. And after the mail-in ballot issue in this county, or the drop box issue in this county last year, and the three-pending cases currently in Luzerne County, and this should have gone as smooth as any election ever. But instead, they were more worried about jamming drop boxes into four townships or five townships in Luzerne County instead of making sure this was right. They jammed them into townships without telling the township supervisors they were putting them there. I don't know if you knew that. You had people driving around the county, purchasing paper at Staples, delivering it, because you could only use an 80-pound weight paper. I'm I'm I boil it down to 34 different locations. Average voter per hour that goes through an election poll is 150 voters per hour, average. If you average all of them. Times 5.66 hours lost, because some areas were out for three hours, six hours, and nine hours. So I averaged them at 5.66 is 29,998 votes. And I don't care whether you're a Republican or a Democrat in this county. It is a shame and a disgrace, and I'm calling for the firing or resignation of Beth McBride and Denise Williams immediately.
I just want to mention a procedure, though. This is Lancaster County, which is intensely, obviously, third-class county. May I vote at the polls if I applied for mailing ballot? Yes, if the election office has not received voted ballot, you may bring your ballot return envelope to the polling location to surrender to the judge of election and vote regular ballot. If you do not have your ballot, you may vote provisionally. Provisional ballots will then be scanned by the, in this case, Lancaster Board of Elections to ensure that a completed ballot is not previously received. That is the law. So you can't spoil it at the polling place, and that is the proper procedure.
Yeah, we found that out.
And to not know that is reprehensible.
But what we're saying?
Right. That the county?
We can't have back and forth.
I get it.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
I just want to put that up.
Sure. Leanne Bush.
Leanne Bush, Cunningham Township. Since 2020, we have been told to trust our election process despite the numerous questionable acts being exposed. Yesterday, during the midterm election, Luzerne County cemented doubts in many people's minds. Who is responsible here? Who was in charge with ensuring the polling locations had the proper amount of paper? The correct paper? And above all, Luzerne County made national news for its incompetence. I want to know who is losing their job, namely McBride. Should be should lose this job. I want to echo his. And I want you all to know, county members that are sitting here, each and every one of you, that you will be on the ballot soon or at a certain time. And we will take that into consideration as a county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
I have a comment that's somewhat related to the election process, although I thought the election process was a disaster, as most people will, a comment tonight about that issue. My big comment is about the duties of the controller being removed by the county manager. I'm not I'm not happy that he has a family matters that are causing him to resign. However, I think it should be done sooner rather than later in this county. As a controller, for the last three months, I've dealt with obstruction. I've dealt with not being able to get information. I've been obstructed with not being able to do my job according to the charter in section 308 by a manager who either does not want to read the charter, doesn't know how to read the charter, or just doesn't care to read the charter. But this council was responsible for him as your manager. Can't hide behind 217 any longer. 217 says you can interfere with the day-to-day operations of the manager. The day-to-day operations has nothing to do with the ability to hold the manager accountable for his job. You hire him, and you can fire him. I am demanding that this council take the resolution next week and follow to section 407 of the charter and remove him immediately. This county is in bad shape. We just had an election. It was done just yesterday, and the manager missed the point, missed the mark altogether, wasn't even near the target. It's just not right. And then he goes to the press and tells the press he's been asked the district attorney to do a post-election investigation. It's not the district attorney's job. That's the controller's job. Read the charter. The charter says if there's criminal activity, unless we can find some, the district attorney would do that. But there's not unless somebody knows of some. So the Controller's Office is the one that should be investigating this. And I'm asking council to ask the Controller's Office to do that. That's my job. I would suggest to this council that you don't accept a budget that was presented to you, because the manager is not going to be here to execute it. I would vote no on that budget totally altogether. Go back to the 22 budget without a tax increase. Don't burden the taxpayers with an $8 million increase why this guy gets a golden parachute. Is he going to get a golden parachute? Is he going to get paid for annual leave, sick time, personal time? How about the moving expenses we paid to bring him here? Are we going to get all that money reimbursed to the county? He's only been here five and a half months. That's not fair to the taxpayers. We're going to get an $8 million tax increase, but we're going to give the manager a golden parachute when he leaves? Unacceptable. This council needs to be accountable for your work. He's hired by you, and he's fired by you. You should be accountable. And you're accountable to the people of this county, as I am as well as an elected official. And we need to make sure that we do the due diligence we need to do for the people that elected us to our positions. And to allow a manager to do the job that he's been doing for the last five months with no action by this council is reprehensible.
Thank you, Detective Griffin. Robert Fisher.
Good evening. I'm Robert Fisher from Salem Township. And I just sent the board a an email last evening. And I just wanted to let you know that I hope you all had a chance to read it. But I've been very dismayed. This, I believe, is the fourth election in a row that there have been problems with the voting, with the machines or whatever that we've had here in the county. And I know the Republican Party has been upset. They're upset of last year during the primary. And that there's been errors all the way along the line. We've had about four different directors over the last couple of years. And it's just is an absolute mess. I'm an executive. I've been an executive. I'm a retired executive. I've been one for 45 years. I have never seen an operation in such dismay as the Elections Board and the Election Bureau of Luzerne County. I'm ashamed. I voted yesterday at 9:30 prior to the problems that we had in Salem Township. I was lucky. I didn't get held up or anything. That was fine. I haven't I decided not to watch any news last night until after the polling places closed. I got a call from my son in Wisconsin prior to 8 o'clock, letting me asking me if I knew what was going on in Luzerne County, because it was on the news that the the judge had requested that the election be held or be continued until 10:00 P.M. In Wisconsin, so we hit the nationalist news. We are a laughing stock, an absolute laughing stock. Something has to be done. As I said, I was an executive for 45 years. If this was under my control, it wouldn't have happened in the first place. Second place, heads would roll, every one of them, and the management and any employees that are incompetent. Because that's what this shows me, is that we have a total incompetent Election Board and Election Bureau. I hope this doesn't continue and doesn't go to the next election. You need to do something. Council's responsible. The manager is responsible. And Randy, I'm sorry to have to meet you, say hello to you. Last time I saw you was in Cordova. But yes, that's where we met. I was up helping the hospital up there. So best wishes to you in the future as well. Thank you.
Mary Cole. I'll be on slow. I'll get there. Take your time.
Good evening. I'm Mary Cole, and I am Majority Inspector of Salem Township. And my my concern is mainly the the paper issue and the lack of responsiveness to our calls. We ran out of paper at voter 320, which was around 9:40 in the morning, and we notified the courthouse. We got messages from the courthouse beginning 10:37. Please be advised that we are aware of a paper issue call. We're actively working to address this issue. If you need emergency or provisional ballots, please call. Then there was also a second message at that time that if you can print the ballots at the location, please do so, and Luzerne County will reimburse. And then again, at 12:30, please call if you're low on paper. Does anybody have spare paper? At 317, please be advised, papers on the way. And the court has ordered the 430 with 437, the court ordered that all the polling locations remain open. We never got paper. We live as far away from Neskapek as you live from Kingston. Neskapek got paper. Warwick did not. Someone went to their home and brought their copy paper so that and ended a test ballot himself, did a test ballot so that to see if the machine would scan it, and it did, and then sent his wife to Staples to get more paper. That's how we were able to finish the day. I just I've lived in that community for a long time. There's a lot of rumblings about poor person, the the this, the the process in Luzerne County. The perception is that it's very poor, and there's something shady going on. And I don't, not saying that there is. I'm just saying that that's the perception that and that's the talk that I'm hearing.
T.J. Fitzgerald. Sorry, I don't know if you can hear me.
Hey, folks. How's it going tonight? All right. T.J. Fitzgerald, Wilkes-Barre City. I predicted it. Robert, should I send an email two weeks ago that the worst decision that you made was a hard-draft request from someone that didn't have a resume? I also asked for a right to know that I get denied by council that I couldn't. We couldn't find out how she got her job, who also applied. So we don't know the transparency of who else was better bet. She was handpicked. Mr. Robertson gave me a call back, said it was Mr. Sisick's answer. But bottom line is, the manager's responsible. Now, council is not at fault. I also put in the email that the election, the people, the search committee had three people. I believed he was the best, interviewed great. And we did the best at hand. The council did the best they could with the options available. We need to move on. I apologize about your mom. God bless. But now you need to make this right. Council cannot fire. They can only fire you. You made a mistake. The only thing that you can do right now is make it right. The only way that we can get trust back into the Election Bureau is to fire Beth and maybe the assistant.
You have a three minutes. Thank you.
We, we, after that, then how do we solve the problem? What we have to do is hire someone that isn't a failure from another institution. We have to, there's an executive here. We need to hire a non-government worker. Anytime you hire a previous governor, they either got fired quick from another place. We don't want anybody else's garbage. We need to hire someone from the private sector that had success. In both places, as the manager and the election bureau. Let's do the intelligent thing. Then after that, we got to get rid of the machines. Machines get corrupted. They break down. Pays the paper and a pen doesn't break down. It's cost efficient. We could save in the budget because we don't have to pay, what's Dominion, Dominion? We don't have to pay them a yearly salary. Let's sell it to some other sucker county. Put them on the market, make a couple bucks, get back. Tomorrow, the Election Bureau should start working on poll workers. We need to educate tomorrow. We could go off to the Democratic Party, Republican Party. The young Republicans, young Democrats. We could go off to the community and do this as a business. We can attract young people that are turning 18 that want to be involved in county politics. John, you were prime example. Amazing. We could get people out here. Steve Urban, you were Young Republic, right, Wollvich? We do have young people that are interested. So we can get enthusiasm there. Last thing I'm going to say, I might finish one, one, and I'll cut it up. Did I tell you who's going to resign yesterday?
Thank you.
Did I tell you who's going to resign?
Laura Panero.
My name is Laura Panero from Wyoming. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with each of you this evening. As a member of Fix Our Roads Luzerne County, I and three other members had the opportunity to discuss the conditions of our roads for over two hours this afternoon in a meeting with Mr. Robertson, Mr. Kurtz, and Mr. Plesh. It was an incredibly productive meeting with many ideas shared regarding opportunities for improved processes. Two very large obstacles were mentioned repeatedly, funding and staffing. Mr. Robertson was very adamant that council drives the budget and that the hiring within our county administration. We had a lengthy conversation regarding the loan just finalized that we give the county the funding to repair all county roads versus one bridge. This idea had been mentioned by Mr. Liskavich, supported by Mr. Thornton. In previous council meeting, Mr. Robertson indicated that if given those funds, they would be difficult to execute. We discussed a phased approach to the funds so that they could gain interest and be used in a more manageable way as a 10 million a year over five years. It is critical that all of our council members understand that our county's liability is growing exponentially. With each construction season that passes, that many of our roads are beyond repair. They simply must be replaced. I urge each of you to consider and approve these funds for every resident in Luzerne County. Every resident deserves to benefit from these dollars and every resident deserves to travel safe roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Grantee. Joe Grantee.
I do. Joe Grantee, Plains Township. I'm here to let you know of the security problems that I encountered. I attended my first election bureau meeting three weeks ago. And I pointed out security problems with the Dropbox procedures. The biggest fail with that is that you could have all the security cameras you want. And anybody with a mask could walk up there and not be known to the public and never be followed up on. Well, yesterday I worked my first election as a machine operator. And one of my duties at the end of the night was to secure the machines with the wire tie type of thing on the doors. As I was doing that, I noticed that those doors could be opened once they were wire tied shut. And I pointed it out and demonstrated how it could be done. For that problem to be missed by whoever secures those machines, somebody should be held accountable for it. Anybody could get into those machines and not be detected. And whoever is in charge of security is the person that should be dealt with.
Thank you for bringing your attention.
Thank you.
Sorry, my name is Alyssa Pucero. I
You speak up a little bit.
Yeah, my name is Alyssa Pucero and I'm, I just wanted to mention one. I am typing a report for each and every one of you. As to the events and how they transpired yesterday from my perspective and some other things that I had received or other things that had happened to me. But I felt at this point today, it was very important that I mention one major issue. After arriving at the pre-cameras area in the pen place on election day, the Luzerne County Manager Randy Robertson stood at the front of the courtroom room and made a short speech. He pointed to Beth McBride and Emily Cook and told the election day workers that they were only to receive instruction from these two ladies and that any other instruction given to them must be approved by them before following through with those instructions. I found this extremely concerning because we adjudicate the exterior of the envelopes and other ballot issues throughout the day by using a bipartisan board teams of two. That the other concern was throughout the day, Beth and Beth was absent from the room and Emily was only there after handling the paper issue and was processing ballots behind the bench scanners. So the people, so the people were unsure as to whether they should accept our direction from the board members due to the, the instruction given by Mr. Robertson. Because of this issue and many, many other issues, the powers being taken away from the board and other things, purchasing powers and things of that nature. I would ask that Randy resign immediately or that you take your time yourselves to remove him from office immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Raybo. Mr. Raybo. All right, we'll move on to the next person.
Good evening. Mark Raybo Hazelton. I was at the canvassing yesterday from around eight o'clock in the morning till around nine, between nine and 9:30 last night. And when I saw, I thought I was, you know, because it was the first time I was witnessing a canvassing of ballots. You know, even though I've been attending meetings since the inception of Home Rule. So I figured, you know, I wanted to see if, get a firsthand look at, you know, how the canvassing of the mail-in ballots was, you know, would happen, how it works. I got the tail end of Manager Robertson's little speech in the beginning of the morning. You know, telling the workers who they, the temp workers, who they work for and who they shouldn't listen to and all that stuff. And I was like bewildered by that. And I was like, okay, well, I guess you just want to make himself clear. So I looked on in terms of the canvassing and all that. And, and I, I just, as I saw the canvassing going on, I saw him come back again during the middle, late morning. Then again in the afternoon, I'm like, oh, wait a minute. That doesn't seem right. I don't think that, and I know elected officials can't go near a polling place during, you know, an election day. But also I don't believe that an appointed one that runs the municipality can also go inside of a polling place nor inside of an area where ballots are being counted and, you know, processed. I could be wrong, but I don't think I am. That's one problem I saw. The other one I saw was when I heard about the paper issue. I was, I was struck because I thought that with all the temp workers that were there and they did a fine job processing the ballots, they were so efficient. They were done by quarter to nine last night. So I, what struck me was in the point in time when the paper fiasco was going on, why couldn't some of those people be asked to deliver paper if they, if the Election Bureau was able to procure some ballot paper to send out to the precincts, the voting precincts instead of, and this is from what I heard, that the district attorney's office was being, some of the personnel from the district attorney's office being used to go and, you know, see about paper, you know, getting paper to the precincts. I don't think that's the purview of the district attorney. So bottom line is, I think that there needs to be a prover inquiry into this.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
And I hope that Beth Gilbert McBride resigns or gets more. Thank you.
William Evert. William Evert. And then Bob McMillan will be next. We want to maybe tee up our speakers. So William Evert. Yep, just state your municipality because it's missing from your form.
Hazel Township.
Thank you.
Yesterday, ran out of paper. Everybody knows about the paper issue. Eight o'clock, started strafing paper from the other machines just to get people voted. At which point tried calling, had nobody responding to any of the calls. At one point, we had four phones going to try to get through. Some hung up, some went to voicemails. There was nothing we can do. So at that point, we adapt, we overcome. Sent somebody out to get reams of paper, the heaviest weight we could find. It wasn't what you guys had in for heavyweight paper. Started putting it through. It worked and that's what we kept people going. There was multiple problems. We always have to adapt and overcome. We had no electrical components in our machines. Far as bus bars or anything like that to hook into. So we had to make do with what we had. The machines themselves, all the latches and stuff, they're in terrible degradation. They, you couldn't open them. We basically had to get pliers and all kind of other screwdrivers. At one point, somebody joked because we're at a fire hall and they said, why don't we get the hydraulics from the fire trucks to open up the machines? So I don't know who's taking care of maintenance or who's responsible, but I want to know what's going to be done. I'm there to try and keep integrity in people. And all I heard today from people, whether it be machine problems, paper problems, or they didn't like the outcome of the election, they said they're never going to vote again. And being a judge, that's the sergeant. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, independent, what party you are. We got to do something. We got to get this game together. Thank you very much.
Bob McMillan. And then after that, Brian Dwyer.
You're going to take only the half of it. Por favor.
Good evening. Boston Township. Want to talk about my personal experience. Went to vote at Union Township, turned away. Went to vote a second time, turned away. No provisional ballots, no paper for the machines. The young lady took down our phone numbers and then sent a text message after seven at night to say paper was available. I've been a lifetime resident of Luzerne County. This is horrible. This is the worst I've ever seen. And I voted in every election since I was 18. I'm embarrassed at this county. And if some people don't get fired over this, maybe we need to get a new council and a new head. Because this is ridiculous. And I want every council member to go on the record and say, if you support a transparent investigation into this, to include providing all correspondence to and from the Election Department to the precincts. Back and forth. Thank you.
Hi. Everybody was nice. I'm not going to be because I don't care. This was BS. My statements are all firsthand accounts. I'm Brian Dwyer from Larksville Ward 2. I was the constable in Ward 2 yesterday. These are not opinions. I was there. Yesterday, counting wide, the voting debacle rises to the level of criminality, in my opinion. From Larksville Ward 2, my firsthand opinion, 50 people were denied the right to vote. There are counters on all the machines and a poll book for every election. So you know on average, how many voters come through each polling place? Therefore, you know how much paper you need. There is no excuse. My ward had the wrong machines and then they didn't work. This is not the first time. This is the third time in an election cycle. We ran out of paper for the machines at about 153 voter count. We never ran out of paper in the last three voting cycles. We average about 400 voters. That's two packs of paper. Again, no excuse. There was no communication from the Bureau of Elections. Every time we called, it took about 45 minutes to get through and each time they had no answers. At one point in time, I was told, we have no paper to give you. We have no provisional ballots to send over. We have no emergency ballots to send over. Do whatever it is you need to do. What does that mean? What is that? Why were the machines turned off at eight o'clock when the court order said 10 o'clock? And the court order said nothing about turning off the machines? If you have 30 people show up at 7:45, they get to vote on the machines. The time allotted for polling was extended to 10 because of everything that went on during the day. So why were the machines told to be turned off and go back to provisional ballots that were specifically marked provisional and then segregated from all the other ballots? That's in a text that came out repeatedly from the county. To me, you're in violation of Lisa Gilb's court order. This again is the third time in an election cycle, people in my ward could not vote at 7:00 AM or vote at 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM due to issues with the machines or communicate. or nine AM due to issues with the machines or communications, or the machines broke down or whatever. Uh, and, and many people who came to my ward to vote made that actual statement on their own. Uh, again, as some of the other people have said, there needs to be a legitimate investigation and criminal charges need to be filed. When something this big happens at one polling place, that's an accident and oversight, I get. When it happens at three or four, okay, somebody's getting fired. When it happens countywide, that rises to the level of criminality. I don't care what your party is. There's no other way to see it. I'm not done. New York County didn't just screw this election.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
I'm finished.
Three minutes.
Well, then, where's, remove me, please.
Mr. Dwyer.
No, but.
The three minutes is up.
Yeah, okay. And this was a big deal, so I think maybe you should take it to four minutes.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that wish to speak that are here? Any other members of the public that are here? If there's anybody else there, you can come in, but I'm going to start with the Zoom. Ms. Hartman? She looks like she's not on. Vivian?
Hi, this is Vivian Kreidler-Lacina. I'm from Neskapek Township. Luzerne County residents were disenfranchised yesterday severely. By ten AM, now I worked outside the polls in the parking lot. By ten AM, somebody showed up delivering two rings of paper and then came back out his vehicle and got another ring and took it in. So Neskapek Township had run out almost by ten AM. We had already hit two hundred people at the polls at that time. Randy Robertson needs to, his resignation needs to be accepted, and he needs to be removed immediately along with Smith Beck, and Williams. Both need to resign. The best solution I have right now for Luzerne County Council is to ask that we have a reelection in Luzerne County, and it's done on paper ballots so that every resident who came out to vote yesterday can vote. Because there were many that were on their way to work and could not get back to the polls before they closed at ten o'clock. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Mark Schaefer?
Hey, can you guys hear me fine?
Yeah.
All right, so I just want to.
State your municipality, Mark.
Oh, sorry, Wilkes-Barre. I just think we need to keep in mind the context. Everyone here is saying, this has been a problem the last three elections. This has been a problem the last four elections. So the idea of saying, we need to fire people who are hired this year, makes no sense as a solution. The problem with our Bureau of Elections is we can't keep anyone. Everyone is quitting. Everyone is getting, no one's getting fired. Everyone is quitting after a year or two. Aaron Harvey quit to run for office, and no one's mad about that. Uh, everyone is not staying. When you don't have an organization like that, that has no one with experience on staff, you're going to have problems like this. So you have to ask yourself, why is no one staying at the Bureau of Elections? The answer is pretty simple. When people try and do basic things like implement drop boxes, which, by the way, the drop boxes would have helped with this situation. You can't have a problem with printing paper if everyone's voting by mail. Um, so if we're having people at the Board of Elections who are trying to do something as basic as institute drop boxes, and they're getting threats to their houses, they're getting constantly accused of stealing an election, they're not going to stay. So the reason that we don't have a functioning Bureau of Elections is because the Republicans on our Board of Elections who make up conspiracy theories and the people who come to these meetings and spout conspiracy theories are weakening our ability to retain talent. At the same time, Uon County Council have refused to pay anyone in management an appropriate salary. The people in the meeting today who are saying, we need to hire someone from the private sector with years of experience. Good luck getting someone from the private sector with years of experience to take a Bureau of Elections salary. That's not going to happen. If you want to retain good talent and have a functioning Bureau of Elections, you need to have a good workplace and good pay. These ideas that you can fire everyone and that's magically going to fix something is silly. You need people there who have experience and know what they're doing. Someone like Beth has a master's in public, in public work. Who else has that kind of experience? Someone from the private sector, even if they've done management, has no idea how an election works. You need someone who actually knows what they're doing. Um, yeah, so just generally, county council needs to look at this, look at their budget and say, do we have the right amount of money at the Bureau of Elections? It's pretty clear to me that it needs more funding. And I think this is the result of what happens when you see years of attacks on your Bureau of Elections and your Board of Elections and basic attacks on people's right to vote. You see a struggling election.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Rick Davis.
Yes, Rick Davis, Black Creek Township. Along with everybody else, we, we experienced similar situations, especially when it came to the paper. We just made it by. We didn't have to turn any voters away. But we had the courier constantly scrounging from Sugarlope Township to Butler Township and bringing one hundred sheets, two hundred sheets of paper at a time. He was just running back and forth. I watched our election judge. She spent numerous times outside on the phone calling the, uh, the election bureau, you know, trying to get advice on what was going on, what to do, went, not getting any answers. Again, I was a poll watcher, plus I worked the outside. Many of the people coming there were highly upset that they were worried that they weren't even going to get in to get their vote. And we had a record turnout yesterday. Luckily, we did make it through the day. But again, this is a total embarrassment to Luzerne County. This should have never happened. I mean, how could you possibly run out of paper? Something as simple as a paper. So, I mean, what's, there's more to it than what meets the eye here. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other members of the public? Okay, I have some emails from members of the public that were asked to be read into the record. This first one's from Linda McCloskey. How Luzerne County council members, from media reports, it appears that some council members are considering reintroducing monetization as a budgetary practice. While I more than many appreciate the difficult work for council on finalizing a budget, I strongly urge you to reject monetization as an option. Voters adopted home rule in order to fix many things in Luzerne County, and one of the most important things that needed fixing was the budgetary practices. As has been noted in the media prior to home rule, monetization was a regular practice and not a good one. One of the first priorities for the twenty twelve council and its successors was to adopt realistic balanced budgets that included best practices that would ensure the ability of future councils to continue along a strong financial path and recover from sins of the past. Monetization was one of the first practices to be eliminated. Monetization for a government is equivalent to, equivalent of a payday loan that individuals with poor financial management skills turn to for an immediate but short sighted quick fix, instant problems. Which of you, particularly those who are financial advisors or business owners, would counsel applying or adopt this practice in your own business to use a payday loan? Which of you would, which of you would? Reinstating monetization will bring back and establish a bad practice that costs, take more to eliminate future budgeting than it yields in the short term. It is nothing less than kicking the can down the road and creating bigger problems for future councils. Those of you who came before, you most recently in home rule government, both council members and in management moved away from monetization as quickly as possible. We committed ourselves to improving the county's financial practices and made sometimes difficult decisions to pave the way for a better financial future for the county. I urge you, as you consider the proposal to monetize, to reject it, and continue to move Luzerne County forward in a financially responsible direction. Next one, Robyn and Walter Koshin from Dallas Township. As voters in Luzerne County, we are thoroughly disgusted with the continued ineptitude of the election process in the county. As taxpayers, we expect accountability and responsibility from everyone involved in the administrative process of elections in Luzerne County, including but not limited to Denise Williams, Beth Gilbert McBride, and Randy Robertson. These consumers should not be allowed to continue in their positions when they cannot adequately, adequately do the job or complete the simplest of tasks. For McBride to state running out of paper will never happen again is totally unacceptable. Further, the county has had two years to correct the election process, but instead has fumbled it even more so into the point that they have proved to the voters, election process in this county is unfair and inaccurate, whether intentional or not. While working the polls in Kingston Township alone, we witnessed several voters being turned away for wrong polling places after waiting half an hour to be told to vote in another location. We will never know exactly how many of these voters had to return to work and had no time to travel to another location. Or were so disenfranchised with the bungled election system that they did not continue on to the next location. We will never know if they did arrive at that location, if there was no paper for them to vote. This is utterly incomprehensible and unacceptable. We expect Luzerne County Council to work for the public and hold those in charge count. Next, dear county council, I respectfully ask that you read and enter this into any record taken on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, ahead of your possible vote on LSA funding the replacement of vote West Nanico. This is old.
I've probably already read that.
I think. I might have. It was in my, oh, it was actually recent after the meeting, but this was, this must have been right at the last meeting. I apologize. Sorry, I read within my sack. Cindy Brannan, Wright Township. It is time for a serious discussion. Our team has implored you and previous council to county managers and an acting county manager, two division heads, a road and bridge supervisor, and a county engineer for over eighteen months to fix our roads. The excuses and finger pointing continue. No funds, no staff. Our road and bridge department has up twenty positions vacancies for months. The department failed to advertise they were hiring, however, at a recent job fair. The road and bridge employees are working concert venues, emptying trash along the river, moving files for other county departments, erecting the Christmas tree, moving ballot boxes, and now they're working for overtime pay to help the Bureau of Elections do their job on election night, of course, at the expense of resident safety. This absolutely cannot continue. Our roads are not safe. The people of Luzerne County have expressed outrage that one bridge in a fraction of the county's community should benefit from what will cost all residents up to seventy-five million dollars. All residents will lose the benefit of three million dollars each. All residents will continue to be at risk on all county roads. All residents will risk liability because of our elected official's decision to once again ignore the safety of its residents on over a hundred and twenty-plus miles of county roadway. All residents will risk this administration and future administration's threat to raise taxes because our debt has been multiplied by litigation from certain tragedy on our crumbling roads. All residents will risk watching our tax revenue get wasted when what roadwork has been done and not done correctly, and the freeze thaw cycle destroys it. All three hundred thousand plus residents of Luzerne County are dependent upon a council who refuses to hear the majority and refuses to address the performance and decisions of the county manager they just hired through a search committee they assembled. It is imperative that council understand the exhaustion and determination of fixed roads in Luzerne County. Both nouns are equal. Uh, this is from the Beth's family from Holbeck Township. This is one of the worst roads I've ever seen in my life. Oh, regarding East County Road. This is one of the worst roads I've ever seen in my life. A short piece of it was paved earlier this year. However, the remainder of the road is not fit to drive. For those who don't know, this road was last paved over thirty years ago. It is not safe for our school buses, fire trucks, ambulances, and our daily use is destroying our vehicles thirty years. We cannot wait another year. Newly paved road is good for ten years. I think we have waited long enough. I challenge all members of Luzerne County Council to bring your private vehicle out and drive this road, not a county vehicle, but your private vehicle. Last thing was a, from T.J. Fitzgerald, and he was here, so he spoke, and that is all I have to read. Any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Ms. Ray, if I could just say something real quick. Um, I have other things that I want to say about the election when we have our discussion during the work session, because obviously it was a tough day for everybody. Um, but I was wondering if there's a way we could possibly do something now while we're in the voting session. I, I would like to make a motion that we reconvene the election inquiry committee, if possible, and, and set forth an investigation through council.
Now, second that because.
I don't think you can amend it. My suggestion is, John, it's not a bad idea. I, you know, we're meeting every week now. Make that motion next week. We have a, we have a budget session. We have a special meeting. Make that motion. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it's a good idea, just because of the sunshine. Okay.
Sure, but in light that everything happened yesterday, we didn't have time to put this on the agenda, so I think we should discuss it.
Yeah, we, I, I just thought that maybe there'd be a way we could do it here in the voting.
That's what I thought too.
Get it started. But it has to wait until the work.
I'd do you a favor of that.
Yeah.
If we can't.
Okay. We can discuss.
If it's considered an emergency, we could add it, okay? What do we call this emergency?
Yes, I would definitely call this an emergency.
Yes, I would. I would.
And we're not spending money.
It has to be, I'm sorry, this, Shannon, has to be for, I, I agree totally, but it has to be like emergency as far as life or property.
Okay, all right, so then we'll, we'll entertain it in the work session. Okay, thank you, Bo. All right, any other members, council?
Beth wanted to get on. I sent her a text. She's, she's on now, so if you want to give her opportunity, Beth Hartman?
Oh, sure, I thought she spoke.
She was muted. She's listening to your question.
Let's hear it. Ms. Hartman? She's not on. No, I'll double check. No.
Speaking at the end of the work session.
She's not on. Okay, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So I have a, I have an objection. Or, oh, I'm sorry, hon.
You, you already spoke during public comment?
I, I have an objection.
What's your objection?
Uh, my objection is, uh, Mr. McGinley added an item to the agenda tonight that costed, that cost the county up to twenty-five thousand dollars. The gentleman that stood right here said it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. The county would have to kick in twenty-five thousand dollars. That is not de minimis in, in nature.
It was advertised and during, for the work session. It was advertised and available.
But if somebody wanted to come here to make public comment on that specific agenda item, they would not have been able to do it. Now, I'm asking the same courtesy to give in to Mr. Lombardo tonight, to put it on the agenda. And, uh, let's, let's get a second to put it on the agenda.
Thank you. You made your objection. You made your objection.
You can't add, you can't add one agenda item. I'm still, I'm still, I am still in my objection. You can't add one item that is not de minimis in nature and then tell Mr. Lombardo to wait till next week. And this is the difference between life and property, an emergency, when it comes to life and property, when elections are being rigged.
Thank you. Please sit down. Thank you. I appreciate the objection. Um, we, I, I agree with Mr. Lombardo, but we heard from both of our attorneys that we cannot add it.
What can we add?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. It is seven fifty. Yeah. All right, you guys have your mics on. Everybody's back. We have Kevin. We have Kevin.
I'm here.
Yeah, okay. If anybody from out there wants to come in, there's some open seats. It's eight oh six. We're going to call the work session to order.
Recording in progress.
In a moment of silence, we have role play minutes.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Here.
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
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 Are there more messages on to? Okay, so we. No, do we have any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Yep, so number three will not be on there.
The agenda is submitted without.
Second Venus.
On favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Number one, the division reports for October twenty twenty-two.
Subject to your questions, and again, the only new thing in there is a couple of you have mentioned, thanks, the the planning roster, if you know, as of the last date that was prepared for the pile, but it gives you at least that, it gives you a snapshot of. We have several, a couple hundred vacancies selected. Some places are looking better. Child and youth, some of the activities, mental health, switching over there, so we're picking up a few. I don't have a final count on that because there's still in deciding vote. But short of that, and as subject to your questions, that's last month's, last period's update.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you.
Sir?
The vacant positions, I think it's a great idea, since we're going to have to do a deep dive, I'd go and say, in terms of, into this budget, looking for anything we can possibly look at. I would like to know if we can get those vacant positions, the dates, and what's there, you know, how long are they vacant? Can that be run?
I can see what I can do, sir. I think probably I could give you more of a range quickly rather than trying to do the individual. I really need to check with the HR team to see how much detail they have on vacant days. And I say that primarily as, as you see, I have a child and, and human services, a hundred and seventeen. Some of those have been vacant for a long time, and so whether they slot the first person that's qualified into that most ancient one or the immediate one that someone else has, I probably deserve the right to come back and do more detail.
Okay.
Is that there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Also, before we move on to agenda, item number two, in the interest of time, removing this Division Fifty Operational Services, the budget item, to the twenty-second, is that okay?
Just make a motion for that?
I'll second that motion, remove that, item number seven.
Yeah, on favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? We have the county manager in a minute. Mr. Robertson, did you have anything planned?
Nothing other than I was looking very quickly. I know there's been a discussion we've all experienced here, and I'm not sure if Ms. McBride and Ms. Pecora are online. This is the, this is where I assume we talk of what we do know at this point in time about the election.
We had an election discussion listed as number six.
Okay, I'll wait to number six if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah.
So nothing other.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Number four, delinquent tax discussion. I'm going to turn that over to.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just quickly, Mr. Geronimo is here from Municipal Revenue Services, and he's going to explain a little bit about the process of what monetization is. I know that there was a public comment regarding it earlier, and, you know, there might be some opinions on council about whether or not it is a good step for council to make, you know, considering our financial situation. My idea behind this was just thinking outside the box of ways for us to, you know, put money into the revenue column this year for, you know, for our budget in order to not raise taxes. So, Mr. Geronimo.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council. Thank you for everybody here tonight. My name is Jim Geronimo and I'm with Municipal Revenue Services. We are the only company in Homewood Council to devise six tax liens, and we have some history with the county as some sort of indicated. We purchased the delinquent tax liens for a handful of years, probably about four or five years, from two thousand and seven or so, it's two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. The revenue from that sale was included in the budget. But the county at that point in time decided not to do the sale. The structure of sale is very simple from your perspective. You own an asset. It's a recurring asset. It's an underperforming asset, and those are the delinquent liens. We come in and we buy those delinquent liens, and we pay you for them upfront. Ninety-five cents on the dollar. Can't pay a hundred percent because there's always going to be five percent privately delinquent liens that don't pay out.
And as I'm, as I'm walking through this, as I'm walking through this explanation, if there are any questions, please feel free to fire away. When we buy the liens, we buy a hundred percent of the liens. We need to buy a hundred percent of the liens because our lender that lends us some money to do this.
We need to buy a hundred percent of the liens because our lender that lends us some money to do this needs a perfected security interest in all the liens. Because under the law, if somebody comes in to pay a lien, the receiver of the taxes, in this case, would be elite revenue, has to apply the funds to the oldest lien. And that oldest lien may be outside our borrowing base, if you're familiar with that term, it's a banking term. And regardless of whether it's part of our borrowing base, and that money is anticipated to help pay down our note, it has to go to that oldest lien. So that's why we have to buy them all. The purchase price is based on the face value of the last four four years outstanding and unredeemed liens. The reason for that is it takes about four years for a lien to pay out. Under the scenario that I've run based upon the information I've received from elite revenue, if we did a transaction as of January one, twenty twenty-three, based upon the collections history and the turnover history, the county would net a little over ten million dollars. Now, that includes the amount that you have budgeted of roughly. I've I've seen a variety of numbers from six point five to seven million dollars. So that extra is us monetizing those outstanding unredeemed liens that are still on your accounts receivable that you can't spend right now. You can't do anything with them. You can't borrow against them. All you can do is sell them, or you can sit on them and wait for them to to pay out over time. In year two, so the first year of a transaction, you get this windfall. It's an unrestricted windfall. In year two and beyond, we would continue to buy the delinquent turnover as we did in the past and fund your budget in one lump sum, usually in about February of every year. The interesting thing about this, and some of you may be aware of this, is that revenue that you bring in through a sale like this before the first sixty or within the first sixty days of a fiscal year, if you want, can be brought back into the prior fiscal year for whatever reason. It's a little bit of an accounting trick that I'm sure a few of you may be aware of. In year two and beyond, we would continue to buy the most recent delinquent turnover, and we projected we'd be providing about seven point seven to seven point eight million dollars, which is a little bit higher than what you're budgeting and actually higher than your delinquent turnover. We can provide an amount higher than the delinquent turnover because we own all the priors, and when those pay out, we bought them but didn't pay for them. So we use that additional revenue that comes in to accelerate the pay down on our note, our note. It allows us to have more borrowing power within our note, and that next year, when we do a one-time draw against the note, it's the pay down's been accelerated by interest penalties, and those old liens are paid out, so we can draw more and provide more. And this just continues every year. It's designed to be evergreen, and it's a one-time a year payment that you receive instead of waiting for elite revenue to send you checks on whatever basis they do, weekly, monthly, or quarterly, and it's predictable. So from a budgetary standpoint, about this time of year, if we are in year two or three of the transaction, or even year one, you would say, what should we plug into the line item for delinquent revenue? And with a great degree of certainty, I'd be able to tell you, seven point seven million dollars. You plug that in there. We have a transaction by three or four months later. You get a wire transfer for seven point seven million dollars. You don't have to think about that, and you can spend your time dealing with other aspects of the budget. I'm gonna stop there because that's a lot of information in a very short amount of time, and I'm gonna ask if anybody has any questions at this point. The, there were a few comments in the email that was read into the record at a voting meeting, and let me just respond to those because I guess it's important to understand that this is not a payday loan. This is a legitimate financing structure. It is actually something I believe that the county works with PFM in a variety of facets. PFM actually advocates in councils their count, their clients on monetizations, and we've worked with PFM and other jurisdictions throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on monetizations. It's actually, there was a comment in that email about best practices to not do this. It's actually the opposite. From an auditing standpoint, this actually is a best practice. You're literally taking advantage of the dormant asset that you can't spend. So what do you do? You sell it. So you empty your bucket by selling it, and guess what? January first, that bucket fills back up because the same people that didn't pay their taxes last year aren't gonna pay their taxes next year, and that just continues. How do I know that? We've been doing this for seventeen years, and we funded about a billion dollars with a tax lien sale revenue to various municipalities, school districts, and counties throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania using exactly this model. It's the same, this is the exact same conversation I'm gonna have with Lackawanna County Commissioners tomorrow morning. It's the exact same conversation that my team members having at a school district outside of Pittsburgh tonight. Same presentation, it's the same model. The only thing that changes are the numbers. With respect to the payday loan, don't get caught up in lingo and jingo. The payday loan is a short-term, high-cost loan that is literally due on your next payday. A, this is not a loan. B, this is not short-term. This is designed to be evergreen. I mean, it's a loan for me. I'm taking out the money. It's not a loan for you. You're the seller. You're the seller of an asset. You get paid, and you sell me the same asset every year because I indicated that bucket fills back up. And it's not due on payday. This is a very well-structured financing instrument. The bankers actually line up to participate in because they have a first perfected security interest in the real estate because a delinquent lien takes priority over everything except the US federal tax lien. So banks absolutely love this, and they will lend on it. We are prepared. I've I've got financing lined up for this transaction in the event that you want to go forward. We are prepared that to update these numbers as of January first. They will probably change only slightly, and to the extent they change, they'll probably go up. And we could probably do a transaction in February, and we pay all costs associated with this transaction. We use the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority as a conduit purchaser, and we have since the inception of this program, we pay them a fee for participating in this. We pay bank origination fee, but they are attorney, we'll pay your solicitor if your solicitor didn't factor, or if this is something extra that you didn't consider when structuring the compensation for your solicitor. So if there's a reimbursement to the county for those expenses. Yes, sir.
I just, my head's spinning here.
Sure.
I've never heard this presentation before.
Yeah.
So you said you're currently working with the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority is our conduit purchaser.
Right.
They are currently the purchaser for the the sales that we conduct at Wyoming area school district, Wyoming Valley West, Restwood. This, well, not the city of Wilkes-Barre, that's the City of Wilkes-Barre Finance Authority, but the the transactions that we have in Sycamore County, Carbon County, Lackawanna County, we had the Board of the Redevelopment Authority create a separate nonprofit entity called Public Asset Management, made up of the board members of Luzerne Development, Redevelopment Authority. So Public Asset Management is our conduit purchaser for everything that we do in Lackawanna County, Mid Valley School District, Scranton School District, probably Lackawanna County itself.
So how would this work? You're not currently doing it for Luzerne County.
No, we use the Redevelopment Authority as the purchaser.
So if we went forward with something like this that you're suggesting?
Yes.
What would be the, who would be the kind?
Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, not this PA.
No, and the reason we had to create a separate nonprofit under the the umbrella of the Redevelopment Authority is because by law, the Redevelopment Authority can only participate in these things within the footprint of their jurisdictional structure, and that's Luzerne County.
Okay.
So we needed a nonprofit that could work statewide.
And then you mentioned a few minutes ago about the finance numbers.
Yeah.
What, we're not taking a loan out.
No, we take a loan. You're the seller, we're the buyer.
So we don't have any finance number terms that we have to comply with?
Nope.
Or agree to?
Not at all.
Okay, so it's all on you.
Right. We share all that information with you.
Right.
Because it's completely transparent.
Okay.
But it's all on us.
And you said earlier, you you buy all those liens from us that are hanging around on our books. We're we're not benefiting from them.
Yeah.
Pays ninety-five cents on the dollar.
Right.
So if there was ten million in liens, you would pay us nine and a half million, right?
Right.
I don't know how that works. Okay.
Yeah, and and all of those numbers, we share those with everybody so they can see the math.
And that's done once a year?
It would be a once-a-year transaction, so the the first year is the the larger transaction where we're not only funding what your amount is based upon the delinquent turnover and the collections history. We're buying off the the liens that are on the books.
Okay.
And that's where you get that windfall that's unrestricted.
And what what month typically is that once a year?
For the county, because elite would turn over their data to us really quickly, I would think we'd close this before the end of February.
And that would be every year after that?
Yeah.
Before February, because we we have to do a budget in the fall.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't know what numbers.
You you would know what numbers because what happens is we'll do a transact, let's say we do a transaction in February of twenty twenty-three.
Right.
That funds your line item for delinquent revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
The revenue keeps being collected by elite revenue the entire year. They send it directly to the lockbox at our bank. They send us a report of who paid, what parcels paid, any amounts, and and we do a running audit of that, and we share that with your financing. So they're going to be getting bank statements, our bank statements, that show the revenue that came in, how it was applied to our loan, and they can watch the loan balance go down. And that loan balance is important because when we do a next drawdown the following February, whatever, let's say our line of credit was ten million dollars, and the balance on that note is two point five million. Well, that means we can draw the difference, or seven point five million. We would know that by the time you do your budget in October.
Okay.
For two reasons. Number one, we're gonna know what the pet, the bounce on that note is in October, and we're gonna know what the historical collections are for October, November, December. We can back those out of the note balance and come up with a figure. The only contingency is assuming that the the delinquent turnover amount remains consistent. And historically, it has. Now, last year, the delinquent turnovers actually went down because people were using their stimulus checks and extra unemployment to go in and pay the taxes, which I commend them for doing. That's over, so the link from turnover is gonna go back up in January of twenty twenty-three.
And as far as fees, again, you said there really is no fee to us.
No, no fees at all. We charge the Redevelopment Authority a fee for doing this because it's our product. But we roll that into our financing. So when I go to the bank and say I need X amount of money, I add my fee to it, and then that's just part of our loan.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On your list of client references, there's about twenty-six of them. Five of them are municipalities. I don't think any of them are counties. They're mostly all school districts. So can you tell us about your experience with a county with a budget this size?
Well, this county. We handled the transaction for this county, as I said, for prob, from about two thousand and seven or eight until two thousand and twelve. The numbers that we provided were less because of delinquent turnovers and the delinquent accounts receivable were less. Historically, that was about anywhere from a three point four to four point four annual transaction. Right now, our largest transaction is a school district whose budget is probably twice as sizable as Luzerne County because it's a massive school district outside of Philadelphia. Then the numbers don't bother us. The the borrowing doesn't bother us. The the pay down doesn't bother us. They're just numbers, to to be honest. So we have, we have vast experience in dealing with very, very large budgets and very, very small budgets.
Okay, but no other counties in Pennsylvania?
Not at this time, no, no. The the counties that we had were Luzerne County and Cambria County, which is in Johnstown. And as I indicated, I'm talking to the commissioners next door tomorrow morning, and we've had other conversations with other counties, but, you know, here I stand.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Geronimo.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, you have to get paid with people. How do you get monies from?
How do I get paid?
Yeah.
Sure. So. Sure. So when we, Mr. McInley, go to our bank, and we tell our bank that the advance is going to be ninety-five percent of ten million dollars. So they say, give me ninety-five percent of ten million dollars, and also give me my fee and put that as part of my loan. As long as that loan amount can amortize out over forty-eight months, which is the 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 traditional term of our notes, then it's rolled into our loan, and when the revenue that we bought, because when we buy a lien, we're buying a revenue stream. And that revenue comes in, it's used to pay down our note, and that note includes our fees that are in there.
Second part. Obviously, this is something that hasn't been on Luzerne County decade.
Since twenty twelve. You were chair at the time.
Yes, now it's twenty twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
So I would think it's probably a pretty good inventory of properties that haven't paid the taxes and that liens. Now, if you take all the properties and all the liens for through your process and hopefully make collections, next year is not gonna be as many in that.
So you you're absolutely right, and that's why in year one, there's a big windfall because we're advancing against those old delinquents that they are gonna be. We have the luxury of time of waiting for those while we pay you upfront. The next year, what we're buying is the new turnover, but we also have the ability to draw upon those old liens that we already own. And our borrower, when they reset our note for a new forty-eight month amortization, will base the borrowing upon the anticipated revenue from the liens that we already own. So it took in years two and beyond, it's a combination of revenue source of the current turnover in what we already own.
We, as a county, could expect less, less revenue from any of that transaction, starting with your.
To less revenue than you got in year one.
Yeah.
But the same or more revenue than you're getting now. Your revenue will not go down.
If the revenue will go down.
It does not.
How is that?
Again.
If we had ten million dollars in mays now, you purchase, and you go through the process.
Right.
Next year, we only have three million dollars.
Well, let's use real numbers.
Okay.
So the real number is seven point one is the turnover.
Yeah.
So if the turnover is seven point one, your collections are actually right now hovering around there. So what your budget is probably, as I indicated in the beginning, a range of six, five to seven, depending on if we're moving into a draft or a a prior budget. When we buy year two, we're we're buying ninety-five percent of that delinquent turnover. So you're gonna get at a minimum ninety-five percent of the seven point one. But we're also, we also know that we're going to be getting revenue off of the ones that we already own. We're gonna be getting payments coming in off of the ones that are now a year old. The ones that are now a year old are gonna pay out to the tune of about thirty-two percent. So you have to take that anticipated thirty-two percent revenue, what's remaining from year one, add it, or which is now year two, add it to year one, and the combination of those, and you do that for year three and year four and year five.
Once you get into it, you're locked in.
Yeah, well, are you sure you're locked in? If you want to be locked in. If you don't want to be locked in, and you want to walk away, we'll structure you out so you don't end up with a hole in your budget. But because at that point, we will own all the liens.
Yeah.
And that's something that we're upfront about because it's, I mean, when when you walk, not you, but when the county walked away in twenty thirteen, we are, the collections were strong enough, and the prior transactions were conducted so well that we received a letter from the county in December saying that they didn't want, they didn't want to do it anymore. The decision was not based on a proposal, which was extremely professional, but based on the county's continued effort to control its financial situation, which seemed a bit contradictory. If you're gonna control your financial situation, why not have something that is controlled by definition? But regardless, on December twenty-third, said about five days later, I penned a memo to Bob Law that said, hey, our loan is now paid off, and you got back five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Plus, you got back all the unredeemed liens with no hole in your budget. So pretty good success.
Yeah, it's not, I don't disagree with that part. What I'm saying is, you're locked in, you don't want a hole in the budget. You're pretty much locked in for perpetual kind of sentence, and you said, you know, that was indicated that you have a lot of school districts, and the school districts use this mechanism quite a bit in their budgets.
Yeah, I I mean, a budget's a budget.
Yeah, I understand that. But I'm saying, when the school district has more money in their budgets because of the structure and the fact that they have professional salaries and things.
Sure.
And, you know, they have more, you know, the lane that the counties get a hundred bucks on, they maybe get three hundred bucks on.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it's a.
I mean, it's actually sales, a tax lien sale.
Yes.
Regardless of whether you're a municipality, a borough, a township, a county, the city of Philadelphia, which I've done a a proposal for, which was a three billion dollar proposal. They're all the same. They're all the same. Everybody's got a line item in their budget that, and and everybody's got a deficit at the end of the day. And sometimes they look at this and say, let me use this to try to plug that deficit because I know that it's cash that's available now that I can't have access to, and in year. And in years two and beyond, if I get seven million in my budget, I'm going to keep getting seven million in my budget.
I think I need a little more clarity on that, but that's.
I don't know how much more clear I can make it.
I would talk to you privately about that.
I'd be, I'd be, I'll talk to you all day about it.
Yeah. So, you know, I can bring it and talk you out. You know, you're making a present.
Sure. And 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 as Mr. McGinnley says, um, a a lot of what I do when I talk to. Boards and commissions and councils around the state is especially a council of this size. Is that one-on-ones or small group meetings often are beneficial. Because you can have a little bit more give and take. I can bring out spreadsheets and I'm not going to bore everybody in the crowd who's here to talk about voting rates. Yeah. So raise any other questions?
Mr. Grant, you can speak during public comment. You can speak during public comment.
I want to ask a question.
You can speak during public comment. I'm sorry. Any questions for Mr. Geronimo? All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Should I stick around if there's going to be a question?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
Or even if you have to sneak out and if Mr. Grant, he sends, uh, Mr. Grant, if you even, if he has to leave and you send us your question, then we'll get it to him. If if Mr. Geronimo has to leave before the end of the meeting, you can send us your question and we'll get it to him. Um, next we have discussion regarding resolution approving an agreement with Newport Township for Luzern County Treasurer to collect Newport Township taxes. I believe there are questions from Laura Beers, but Mr. Swats, can you speak to that quickly?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in your pocket is this request. I believe this is a third year. I don't have everything in front of me. But, um, this is a municipality that did not have a adjacent tax collector that wanted to collect at that time and the county took it over. We are being asked by the municipality to continue taking it over. So today, it's just on the work session, uh, had the numbers in there, in the email of how much we collect historically. Again, we are not in any business looking to take over for all the municipalities. I think there's five or eight. Uh, out of all of them that we collect for. So this is one that we collect for. If they had somebody that ran for it. Uh, I'd be perfectly fine with them doing it. But from the information I have, they didn't, and they're asking the county to continue doing it for one more year.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Swats? All right. Thank you. Okay, number six, our final agenda item. We have our election discussion.
Rado. I asked, will that be added to our agenda today? Based on some of the things that went on on election day yesterday. Couple of things I'd like to say. Number one. You know, there's a lot of people who are involved on election that particular day. And temporary people on the red line. And it's a big day. A lot of people are out there. A lot of things are happening. So a massive undertaking twice a year. Unfortunately, yesterday was not one of the best. I will commend, and you've heard many of our people here tonight at the podium. A lot of people who are working at polls really came up with some good solutions. Um, purchased papers on that, and someone else to help out. And I commend them for that. I also would like to say, a lot of people who worked till ten o'clock last night. Normal hours would be eight o'clock. So I think we should compensate them for those two hours. Probably at the rate that we're paying them. That's, I want to say that on record. I realize I don't have the power to do that, but I think that would be certainly something we should do.
I think that.
Compensate those people.
We are, we are. Yeah, yeah, I.
And that's fine. I appreciate someone doing that. And I think that's the least we owe. It's been pointed out here by several people. We have an issue with the director and assistant director, et cetera. We have not had a person in that office for any length of time, for many years now. In just about every election, there's a new person head up that office, a new person going through an election for the first time. Unfortunately, elections, you have to have a history. You have to know some procedures. You have to know what the checklist says. There's so many things that involve in that one day. And it's critical day. I know probably everybody who's seated in this room, probably got thirty emails or text messages or phone calls or whatever, at least yesterday.
At least.
And unfortunately, there's nothing you can really do yesterday because of the situation. We're putting up paper. We don't have the authority to direct somebody or demand somebody to do this or do that. And. You know, that's something that falls to the leadership of that department in the leadership of the county. Now, I, as part of this discussion, I would hope. That we can go ahead and really do a good inquiry in the situation. Drill down for the facts. And find out what happened, whatever that is. And then make some decisions about accountability. Accountability, have that obligation to our people out there who vote. Be accountable. And that's one of the major. Projects of the county to run those elections. And we have to be more successful, more voter-friendly, more access. So we should be encouraging people to vote. I hope everybody's doing it. You know, we may have these glitches. Unfortunately, some of the negative things turn people off. And we're probably losing some voters because of, turned off because of issues they've had. I've probably talked too much, but that's my feeling. I don't expect any answers tonight. This is the day after. They still haven't done all the procedures they have to do with the COVID election. But what I would like to do is whatever questions we have, forward them to people who are in leadership. And ask them to respond within two weeks, once they conclude this election. And then we can have a more in-depth discussion at that time. I want to go on record that. That's the way I like to proceed if everybody's comfortable with that. I want to commend the people who work the polls. I think they did a great job. Really were very good about coming up with solutions and, uh. There's a lot of those people who worked many, many years in those positions. God bless them. It's a long day, seven AM to eight PM and a little bit longer, especially with that, the drive-in, bring the information back to the event place. We have a lot of good people who've worked a long time. And I think we have, I think we have to look at this. And look at reasons I wasn't very successful. Thank you.
Mr. Germa.
I want to echo what Mr. McGinnley said, and all the poll workers that are out there, again, having extended an extra two hours after such a long day. We really are thankful for everyone that did that because it is hard to get forward. We hope that you volunteer again at the next election. We've got to get this straightened out. We can't lose focus, you know, to the question of what happened. It's got to be, it's got to be answered. We've got to figure it out. It's unacceptable. We did have the election inquiry committee before, and they came up with, and Steve, you were on it. So they came up with a protocol or some, you know, suggestions for board. And the election bureau, did they follow up on? We don't know. We don't know. So certainly doing the inquiries, but, but does it lead to anywhere? So we want to make sure that if we do some suggestions, that we can follow up and make sure that those suggestions are taken. Again, the turnover, that's a hard thing. You have a lot of turnover. So maybe they don't even know what the protocol is. It shouldn't be that way, but again, unacceptable. So, you know, I have no problem. I do want to reconstitute the committee and just get a new chair for that.
Sure.
Do that maybe next.
Yeah, so we'll have to, we'll have to give a scope to the committee. We can work all of that out, um, for sure. Um, I I want to echo the same thing as well. Everybody who who volunteered and worked at the polls yesterday. Uh, to be asked and not know, uh, that you're going to be there until ten PM and, you know, to find out halfway through the day that your day is being extended by two hours pretty late at night. Um, thank you for doing that. We definitely appreciate it. And also, I can't imagine the day was easy for anybody because although. We all know in hindsight that it was not your fault. I'm sure the public, just in their, in their anger of being turned away, kind of took it out on you guys. So. We thank you for that. Um, I I also think informing the, in reconstituting the election inquiry committee. Um, this isn't just a inquiry committee problem, but I think with our our board as well. Our employees are leaving and turnovers happening in that office and a lot of people that are leaving are saying that it's because they're getting, like the. The rules of where the board's duties end and where the bureau's duties begin is, is the lines are blurred. So the board is then giving direction. The employees don't know if they should be getting that direction. They're saying, don't listen to this person, listen to that person. It's very unclear. So they're, they're trying to do a job that they've never done before because everybody in that office is, is new. So they're in uncharted territory, running an election. They don't have anybody in the office to say, hey, this is what we've done in the past. They don't have that. They're new. And then they have direction cut or, you know, instruction coming from all directions on how to handle things. Then they're saying the board could do this, the board can't do that, council could do this, council can't do that. So I feel like that just makes their job even, even more difficult for sure. Um, I'm not excusing any of the the issues that happened yesterday. Uh, it was a. Really large mistake that was made, but also we do have to take into consideration that these people are new. And there is a lot of misinformation being spread around on what they should be doing and who they should be listening to. And I think all of us, all of us probably sitting here realize that that's happening to some sort of degree. So.
No, but, oh, go ahead, John. Oh, sorry. Uh, I'll be quick. Um, I just want to add on to that, especially one of the things that Ms. Rado said about the the blurred lines between the the duties of the election board and the responsibilities of the election bureau. Um, I think that's something that we as council can definitely hammer down on and we should do that immediately. That was. One of the things that I talked about when I was campaigning for this office is to. Um, sort of hammer down on a couple of those things in our charter and our bylaws that are, are ambiguous that we need to fix. Unfortunately, you know, we've gone from issue to issue to issue and that sort of got put on the back burner. Um, not to suggest that that was necessarily the only reason for, um, what occurred yesterday, but. I mean, I'm sure that everybody else agrees with me that when you're receiving thirty, forty, fifty phone calls and feeling completely helpless. You know, you you feel like you somehow have been part of the failure. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I'm, you know, taking this very personally. And I understand. You know, as someone who's been in political process a million times, that just election day itself is probably the most stressful day. Being whether you're an elected official, whether you're working in the election or anything in between, you're, it's an extremely stressful day. So that's why I, um, offered that, that desire to reconstitute the election inquiry committee. But one of the things that I really would like to do is sort of, uh, emulate what we did with our IT department. And, um, see if we can maybe get the county commissioners association of Pennsylvania to come in and give us some recommendations on what we can do with our elections bureau. Um, and, and if there's anything else that, you know, I know that we had the elections group in here last year, um, to give us some advice. I and I know that a lot of that was implemented and a lot of it was very helpful. Um, but I would like to see what the other best practices are throughout the state of Pennsylvania and hopefully, you know, we can, we can hammer down on some of this and get it fixed.
Thank you.
Yes, this is Rado. Thank you. Uh, for, for items, I just want to discuss briefly here and I know it's only a discussion here. But, uh, we are going to take up the issue in the near future of an inquiry. Council's going to vote on something. Uh, my recommendation is to, at this point. Don't go with a criminal investigation until we know there's something uncovered that may be criminal. Um, I I would like to rather see, uh, actually comes under the duties of the controller. The watchdog of the county. Uh, I would like to see us authorized the controller to conduct the inquiry and get all the information. And then and only then, if something's uncovered that seems malicious and intentional or criminal, then we should consider. Uh, district attorney investigation at that point. Uh, that's just my opinion how we should proceed. Second point I have here, uh, how the heck in the world, how are we going to possibly certify this election? I don't know how they could certify an election with all of that disruption out there. We heard, uh, firsthand evidence from individuals tonight who said, uh, at the podium, they worked at the polls. They were, the one guy was a judge of an election, uh, even with the latch wired shut locked. Uh, mechanism they use, you could still get in the machine, you can tamper with ballots. Um, and there was a lot of ballots shredded yesterday at different locations. We know that. I don't know how they possibly are going to certify this election. Just throwing that out there. Third, uh, to John's point, I thought he made a good point just now. I wrote down a similar item. There are other counties that have election bureau directors who have been there a long time. I think we should seek them out and get advice and say, ask them, you know, wh- wh- what has worked where you were at? Why, why do you, why do you have employees that stay there and they're not leaving all the time? And ask them. I mean, they're doing it right. So why don't we seek that out? Why, let's not try to reinvent the wheel with, with new people here every other year, hiring new people in the bureau. So I I would like to see someone reach out to them. Lastly. It's, 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 uh, was conveyed to myself and Mr. McGinnley tonight in the retund out there, uh, by an election board member that. He would actually like to see the, uh, us to consider eliminating the election board altogether. According to him, he said, all the powers and duties that are authorized of the election board, they're stripped away from them. Every time they turn around as far as authorizing purchases of equipment or, uh, monitoring things or, or, or doing whatever they do. Whatever they're supposed to do by according to the charter, they, they've been stripped away most of their authority and powers. And he said, it really is a board that is becoming futile. And he he would like us to consider that in the future because there is no purpose to have a board if they can't exercise what they're supposed to be exercising. And that's, uh, concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank the public that that works the polls and all the election workers. Thank you. I know it was not easy. I got many phone calls yesterday morning throughout the day. Uh, from people on the board and also the public. Uh, it's a, it's a difficult job when it's chaotic. I think, you know, quite honestly, I've been sounding the alarm for a long time. I've told everybody publicly numerous times, it takes about seventeen people to do what three commissioners do in other counties. Maybe I'm not going to be so nice to management and staff because we don't have to reinvent the wheel like Mr. Thornton had said. A lot of counties put all of their procedures right online. I just pulled up Landpass on my phone before and they have their stuff together. You know, all their procedures processed are based on the rule of law, title twenty-five. I would agree that Controller Griffith should be the lead person on this, uh, along with the election inquiry committee. I think we should also pull an outside election attorney, put it in the budget, get an outside election attorney. Because I think Mr. Skeen puts him in a bad position too because he's conflicted. You know, he reports to a county manager. And, you know, he has to report to us in, in a sense, but he's paid by management staff. So. The bias sometimes, I think, for the attorney is more on the management side. It's been a power struggle for many years, you know, like who actually conducts elections? I've been harping that title twenty-five is the rule of law. No matter what our charter says. I mean, the only thing our charter does is actually produce the makeup of that board, the composition of that board, who serves on that board. But that charter cannot strip the powers under title twenty-five that are given to those individuals. We appoint those individuals like any authority board commission. Those individuals have the power to conduct elections and to register voters. That is their sole function. And quite honestly, everything they do is supposed to be transparent like us in public meetings. They adjudicate votes. They are part of the production of election process. If you need to look that up, look under title fifty-three, twenty-nine sixty-two B. You know, that there are about twelve or thirteen, actually. With the DA provision, I think there's like thirteen provisions where a county charter cannot supersede Commonwealth and Pennsylvania state statutes. Okay, title twenty-five is title twenty-five. Like title, I think sixteen is the DA's office. Title twenty-five is election law. There's powers and duties which I've sent numerous times out to everybody, including the election board. Unfortunately, maybe they've sort of backed off and never really fought with their own solicitor, the county. Unfortunately, you have to have some infighting once in a while and some arguments that they have powers and duties that are prescribed by them under the law. There's case law, I've read it. Um, I've immersed myself in it, so I can speak, you know, pretty plainly about it. It's pretty clear that the charter cannot, like I said, supersede state law. You, I've looked at other county charters throughout the state. The unfortunate part is that this county doesn't have any legislative member on the election board. And so there's no continuity when it comes to a budget process. You know, when you had commissioners, they're the legislative executive, board of election members, except when they run for office, because they can't certify their own elections. But during those years, they, the judge, president judge appoints members. Those people are still tasked by equipment, still tasked to produce a budget. You know, and I've heard one county where the board of elections actually bought equipment, where the current sitting commissioners did not like it, but too bad, it happened. They made the decision publicly, it was a public doing, uh, and, and it was a public process. Here, county management has stolen that process from buying equipment, threw it in our court, which we have no purview. You look at certain cases and really buying election equipment, buying paper, buying supplies is all on the board of elections. They have the ability to produce a budget. I've told you time and time again, our administrative code, allowing the division head of admin services to be their clerk is a violation, direct violation of title twenty-five, because they have the ability to choose their own clerk. You know, so if they exercise that right, that's going to conflict with our admin code. They can, well, in theory, we're going to have two clerks. Um, I've looked in the past during the twenty-twenty election, during the general election and the primary, we've had people sign off on raised sealed documents that went down to the bark of the state where those individuals signed off as the clerk to the board. And they were not ever sworn in under oath to sign that as that title. You know, and I've said that, you know, unfortunately, I've actually submitted that to the authorities, to the FBI, to the attorney general's office. I'm going to be public about that at this point, because I think, you know, we have to take elections very serious. Okay, I, I would look, love to have the FBI in here to look at a complete investigation on and everything. Yeah, because I think the DA would also be conflicted up, because this is, this is Omaha County. So if you're going to throw it out there, if there's every, anything criminal, I think you need to just pass it off. Let an outside agency look at it independent, just like an outside attorney. There's a lot of election attorneys out there that specialize in this. Um, and I think they can offer better insight and offer an actual true objective approach to the election law, the charter, you know, title twenty-five, what are the powers and duties of, of the election board? You know, like I said, I think I made it pretty crystal clear numerous times, but nobody wants to listen. And I said many times too, that we need to cooperate with one another. Sit down in a room, take the subcommittee of counsel, a subcommittee of the election board and county management and come up with a game plan to make this more successful. Because if they have a budget, we have to produce the budget, we're in budget season right now. We've got the grant, you know, paying staff, making sure every, I mean, I got a phone call today. I was on the phone with an election board member and two people that were in the office that were temp workers were not sworn in, because that question was asked of those two workers while I was on the phone. What is your name? Were you sworn in to touch any election documents? And they were saying like, what are you talking about? So anybody that touched any official documents within that office has to be sworn in. So I want to see documentation on, on all of that. You know, i- 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 elections are a very serious matter. I don't want the public going out buying their own paper, don't want to see text messages that you can go and print your own provisionals. It, that now is like, you know, the wild west here. How do we actually count all of that stuff? You know, they're not, it's not an official paper weight, anybody could have just run anything off on their computer at that point. You know, what are you telling people, just go create your own QR code next and insert it into the, the scanner?
For, certify the election.
Well, how would you certify? I, I, quite honestly, uh, and I don't think a do-over was ever been done in this Commonwealth, but I think these aren't counting. Needs a do-over on another day, uh, and maybe get back to pencil and paper, unfortunately. And in Lackawanna County does it, they were, I think, done counting by nine o'clock. We've put all this machinery in place that's supposed to aid us. We've given you the money in good faith, thinking that you know how to use it, you're trained on it, and it's really failed the people. You know, machinery is supposed to be more efficient and allow you to, to get ahead. But like I said in the past, previous manager hijacked process. Uh, he didn't take the recommendation on the old, you know, like, uh, I'm the machinery. We're going to buy Hart and Civic in the past, where there was a clear paper cap. So when you actually did your ballot, it printed, it actually moved along right and went right into the scanner. So people wouldn't have to pick it up off the printer and put it in manually. You know, you took the extra step out of that process. But for some reason, he chose to, then you brought it to this council. And like I said, I would throw my own father under the bus to take that vote, because he didn't have the authority, nor did council previously have that authority to buy the, nor the poll books. We had a public vote from the board of elections stating that we need that equipment. We would recommend to county council a budget for it. And, and actually spend on it because they wanted it. So I think we have a very, very much process problem. We aren't unfortunate, based on our charter, we're not the ones that should be making the equipment decisions here. We can give you the money to buy it, but we're not going to choose to buy it for you. You have to tell us why you need it, how it's going to benefit you. Um, and I think the bureau can only make recommendations to the board. And that board really has powers that people try to ignore, and it's been a power struggle since inception of Home Bowl. You know, and, and firing of a pre-. Pay out a lawsuit. So there's, there's a lot of things that have gone, transpired over the years that I think need to be readjusted. Not even knowing the spoiling of the ballot process, that, that's insane. You know, running out of paper, you just need enough paper for the, you have the total amount of voters in a ward, minus the people that sent the mail in, in, that's the maximum amount of pieces of paper, maybe plus ten percent for a jam or something like that. That's all you need for, for that. You know, who did the, who did the pre-flight checks before all this went out? I mean, you, you have all the staff, uh, we have the election grant now. That should have ramped up those individuals in that department. Prior to all these machines going out and the elimination of the poll books, just because they're in the light, doesn't mean that they don't work. And that caused additional confusion yesterday, it caused additional people not to be able to vote. I think we disenfranchised, you know, probably a good five to ten percent of people in this county that wanted to vote. You know, I, I would be hard pressed for them on the election board to certify this election. You know, I'm just waiting until we get a class action lawsuit at this point. And the liability that we're going to have to, you know, try to rectify, I don't know, and I think it's coming. And so, you know, there's a lot to think about. I think the controller should work with us. We get an outside election attorney that's away from this county and then we'll decide on what to do.
Thank you. Uh, I know, remember the council, Mr. Radel?
Yeah, real quick, I especially want to thank the poll workers. I know you guys were there an extra two hours, I know people have commitments, they have lives. Court order, I know, said you have to be there, going to be helping, attempt, I mean, I may have an issue with that. Um, another question about constables, are the constables in any way refunded for their time for extra two hours, you know?
As to my knowledge, everyone who worked over till ten o'clock that time.
Okay.
Or will, yeah, that's the election grant week. When the court order was issued, settled that, if I recall, at two thirty, three o'clock.
Okay, perfect. Um, another issue that I, I noticed, I was at a polling place, township police were out delivering paper to polling precincts. I don't know if they were compensated for that, if, what the directive for that was, who made that authorization, I'm not sure. I don't know if that's under their jurisdiction, it's supposed to be serve and protect, I don't know if delivering papers following that guideline. Um, again, I know this is a very passionate issue, I know the public's been here, I know, I appreciate each and every one of you for coming out. I know my grandfather, growing up, he refused to vote absentee, he voted at the polls, took his cane, took his walker, walked all the way up the steps up to Heights Elementary. And then he, what do you do, sit there for two hours, say, oh, you can't vote, we don't have any paper? You know, he's not going to come back, he wasted all his energy for that day to come out and vote at that time. That's disenfranchisement. And I feel bad for all the other senior citizens and other people who have commitments, jobs, work. It can only vote between maybe seven and nine in the morning and they can't come back. Sometimes you can work until ten, that's an issue. Uh, we really do need to bring back the inquiry, I agree with that wholeheartedly. We need to do an investigation, get all the facts and then accountability. I know everybody's here, you know, gunning, you know, we need to do something right now, but we need all the facts, get everything straight, know what happened, why it happened. You can't be just jumping the gun, there's still a process involved here. Election day may be over, but it's a long lengthy process up until it's finally certified. And I need to make sure that everybody is focused on the goal, we need to make sure everything was done. I know provisional ballots were cast from eight to ten, they're probably still being counted. That's another issue. I mean, now say if I was standing in line at a polling place, at eight o'clock, there's a line of fifteen people. If I go to vote at eight fifteen, does it go through the machine, does the machine shut off at eight o'clock? Is that a provisional ballot? I mean, that's written into election law, if you're in line at eight o'clock, that ballot's going to count. So was it supposed to be done provisionally or was it supposed to go through the system? I'm not sure. It's another question I have, I mean, we could save that for the inquiry committee. And again, like I said, I want to thank all the people out there on election day, it's a very long day, long process. I was standing outside answering phone calls, trying to hand out stuff for my candidates. Uh, it's a very long day and I appreciate all the voters that did come back, took the time out of their day to make that arrangement. And I feel bad for the ones that weren't able to, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Manager, I promise, so I voted, you know, I'll start off with this same as everyone else did, to thank the, all the poll workers out there. I voted afterward yesterday, so I think I got to hand over one about four thirty, five o'clock. Our workers had already been notified that they were staying late, no complaints, and, I mean, they were rock stars. They stayed the whole time, no complaints. And one of them, I was, I know they had something at six o'clock the next morning. To do it without any complaints is just fantastic, we have great people, we really do. As far as yesterday goes, I would describe it as a fumble of massive proportion. I thought it was, it did not go well, it really didn't. I was getting phone calls starting early about all of these incidents. We have to get our house in order, I think we have to. I, I think Vice Chairman Lombardo made a great point, I think this, this inquiry committee for the election is the start. And I think we need to get some processes in order, things that we can follow going forward and make sure that we have consistency, we can start to restore some trust in our citizens' eyes with regards to the election. Because it seems to be happening on a repetitive basis, we need to fix it. Thank you, Mr. Radel.
Thank you. Councilman Muscavage has his hand up.
Thank you.
Sure.
When I ran for council, myself and Mr. Thornton, we ran on an election integrity. And needless to say, it, it was very embarrassing to be part of what happened yesterday. And on so many fronts between, the worst thing is to know paper, that should never happen. But to have calls with the equipment up in, uh, Harvey's Lake with seals broken, shredded ballots up there, some people doing provisional ballots, some using machine, then put them in a box. I agree with Mr. Thornton, how in the world do you ever verify this election and say we have good numbers? It's impossible. There was just so many places that things went awry. I don't think anybody sitting there, unless they're lying, could say that the numbers are correct. Absolutely, one thousand percent, no. And then my last question is, are we now on the hook from this shenanigan with the paper for one point two million dollars with the election integrity grab, because we didn't have our numbers done by twelve AM? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I believe they were done, Mr. Muscavage, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think they were done early.
Mailings were done, I understand, nine thirty.
Mailings were done, mailings were done at nine thirty, yes, thank you.
She can maybe give a statement if she does.
I don't believe so.
Yes.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Um, okay, do any other council members have comments to make? If not, we will move on to public comment. Okay, so I still have all the slips from earlier without check marks on them, but instead of going through them, uh, we'll just go.
Are you going to do the operational services?
No, we moved that.
Before you do public comment or not?
We moved that.
We moved.
We took it up to you, John.
All right.
You know how much you like being here too?
Well, it's fun.
Before we go on to public comment, Mr. Robertson, do you have anything to add?
If you want, I mean, it's.
If you'd like to, yeah.
From the closer driver's seat, not one, all doing it. Uh, here's what we know at this point in time. A hundred and thirteen thousand ballots were successfully cast. They're counted. I anticipate that maybe just looking at the stacks, because I've met every one of those coming in, I saw you at one o'clock in the morning. So we talked to them, that you probably have a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty-five thou. By the time it's all counted, would be, or adjudicated, I think they're supposed to be done by Friday, is what they're planning. That said, that'll be the largest midterm in the history of this county, as I understand. What I do know is I was down with the district attorney somewhere between eight and eight-thirty yesterday morning. They, it's been queried and the district attorney has told me no more than thirty minutes ago, uh, he will do an investigation, should you want. He did an investigation apparently on the twenty-twenty. He provided you all with the same thing, what, two months ago, something like that. Um, I think for the kind of complaints that I have heard in terms of breaking seals and all of that, could it lead to other things? So it seems obvious to me, district attorney, your source, a totally unbiased source to do an investigation. But on about eight, eight-thirty, he and I and about eight or ten of his guys were down at warehouse. We have in the front lobby, you may have seen it last night, probably a wall full of this paper. It was loaded, the first car, as I recall, was going out to, from some who had said they didn't have enough paper. And, uh, they ran a test down there, the tests worked fine. The, uh, process was stopped because we received word that the state of Pennsylvania told us not to use that paper. Uh, why I don't know, again, I was with the district attorney, so we called the cars back. Complaints kept growing, no one, at least from my going back between four or five offices all day, no one asked anybody, township couriers to go buy paper, not to my knowledge. Again, there's a hundred and eighty-six of them and there's people texting and writing, so I didn't see any of that, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen. I know we had an industrious person buy their own paper and it jammed the machine at Harvey's Lake. And what I was told is it broke the scam and therefore they have to be. So, um, seeing it multiply, the attorneys, the two, Mr. Skeen, Ms. Radek, uh, met with, uh, on the phone with the two party attorneys or representatives. And they, uh, said this is not going well, so we need to petition the court and see if we can get extended time. That was mid-morning, something like that. Uh, we got in the earliest appointment that they could be obtained was about one, one o'clock, I think was the here. They were there, we were there for ninety minutes, plus or minus. The judge issued the order, we all saw that, had to be hand carried around all hundred eighty-six precincts to include people. Ironically, got a call, at least I got a call from the election people back that they're saying, the state now says you can use their paper. I'm not sure what they can do to handle this problem. But that's what the investigation will try to bear it out is who's giving guidance to them. Um, but throughout the course of the day, the paper get going lower and lower, and the guidance, as I understood, was to try to distribute as best you could. Because we were told not to use the paper, then we don't use, use the paper. And the notion was, uh, don't use it because it could jam. And I don't know if that came from the manufacturer, again, this came through the state, because I understand them. I don't know if they're online still, but they were prepared.
It was not supposed to, just came from the state.
I can't, I don't want to tell you that, I just tell you, I was on the receiving end of the warehouse and they said, don't use it after it's been tested. And then about two or three hours, use it, but contrary to all that. Throughout the day, they went to every paper source, I was aware of that, and they knew countywide and purchasing people everywhere they could get it. They borrowed it wherever they could, this specific weight. And they found some, it was distributed to the furthest out locations. But it certainly wasn't not enough, so they did an emergency order, I mean, they would have done that earlier, but there was nowhere to be had. No county belonged, there's no one else with loaned paper. Uh, so it ultimately was ordered. So all that said and done, the, about eight o'clock. about eight o'clock yesterday or less, I asked the attorney, I said, this doesn't look right. When we're done with this, would you take a look at this? He said, yeah. Uh, later in the day, I asked him, because it was getting worse, we, when we're done with this, this is not the time. We need to take a look at this. Can you do that for me? Yeah, we, we need to. And then finally, this morning, I talked to him and then thirty minutes ago, Mr. Skeen and I talked to him again. What happened here is, as Mr. McBride, and she was in the courthouse from time to time, I'm with her down there, so I don't know exactly. There's a one o'clock, so I don't know what news they, unacceptable. No one could concur more with that. This is a favor. But what I would commend to you is we need to let wise people, just me, and wise people who do this for a living, figure out what went wrong, where did it go wrong? Uh, and if there's a, it was a human error that was discovered. If it was intentional, and that has been raised a couple of times either yesterday morning, was this intentional? Don't think so, but I don't know. So that's what we know as of when I walked in here. If there was an error in the bureau's part, we need to deal with that. But we need to have facts rather than speculation on where that problem lies. But I would ask, go back and I'll, but there's one thing Mr. McGinnley said and one of the other fellows. We've talked, you've talked about this before. As I understand, in the election bureau, we changed leaders four times and deputy leaders four times. I believe it's eight in the last two and a half or three years. It's a science and there's a lot of moving parts. And no amount of money or temporary people are going to replace that institutional knowledge. You've seen that here in my estimation. Then coupled with that is the whole notion that, yeah, my five months here. The board versus the bureau needs to be defined. From the very first day, his finger pointing, and it's not helping you and it's not helping the citizens. And I don't know who's right or wrong. I got it. I know some consider the charter sacrosanct and it's a good charter, but doesn't address twenty twenty-three. And if so, should there be an action in my estimation to do that? Because until that's resolved, it's still, you're gonna have the same kind of things. I agree with Mr. Urban on this one. Somebody needs to resolve it and say, you're in charge, not two different complimentary. And then you need to look very closely if you put someone on the board. Why are they there? What's the intent? What is their purpose? Are they serving you to the best of their ability and the election process in a fully unbiased, open manner? That's important.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Want to add one point per comment, um, actually two. There is a difference between provisional and emergency ballots. Emergency ballots should have been engaged instead of probably provisional. Because emergency ones are, equipment breaks down, they automatically get counted by the board instead of having to look at the reasons why with the provisional. Uh, and, and second, uh, you know, going back to all of this, you know, it, it's just, we really want to dive into it, get a little bit deeper into it. Like I said, go and get some outside attorneys that are specializing in election law. Um, get everybody out, you know, that's involved in this county, get the bias out, get everything out. Like, you know, I can't stress that enough. And that's pretty much, you know, all I have to say on this issue right now. I don't want to beat the dead horse to his point. And, and let's redefine these roles.
Thank you.
I still have one question.
Sure.
We could just give some clarification, just from PA Department of State on that directive, where, why it came about. Is it written who sent the directive?
You mean, you mean the, the elections people? I was out in the field, but that will be part of the investigation. And again, eight or eight thirty, something like that, Sam and his entire deputy force was there. And the reason they won, they, they have the likes inside, they can get the paper there and they had districts, so it was not an ungrace thing. And he said, we can do it far better than trying to get people to come here and do that. Made absolute sense. He's real extraordinary team. But Ms. McBride and, or and or Ms. Cook and or Ms. uh, Picaro were back there. And all I know is Ms. Cook and I were at the warehouse. She ran a couple of tests. It worked well. We loaded the cars. We had two, that entire, two tons, three tons of paper being deployed. The first car went out, in my memory, and then we got the call and said, they don't want you, they be someone in the state elections. So we'll have to dig deeper. That's where we were yesterday. And then while I was in court, somebody changed their mind.
That kind of smart. What even Dominion should be the one that was saying, I would think. And didn't, didn't we, were we supposed to have Dominion people on board or was that just in the front?
There was a Dominion rep in the room.
Okay.
They're a female. Yeah. I was told that she had two headphones on, was listening to soft rock or something. I don't know. I wasn't there when that came in. And I don't remember if it was Ms. Picaro or someone else said, we need to get a hold of Dominion leadership and get them out of here right now. And then we got sucked off one of those things all day in court, but, uh, you, I believe, they, I'm not familiar with Dominion machine, other places I've been, they did use pencil paper. More paper drought-driven systems. I have real concerns and I believe it was Mr. McGinnley, he said that when machines were bought years ago, you were promised you could put this through the piece of paper or suck it.
In the retunda with the machines, there was three different vendors that were here. I went around and a lot of people went around publicly. That was one of the questions I asked and the answer was yes.
And I think it's in their contract respect sheet, so I think maybe the county needs to look at that, investigate the contract.
A whole host of things, yes, sir. But what we saw yesterday is you had tons of paper. And it wasn't the paper that should have been either. That has to be looked at. Apparently it was bought a year or two years ago. But it was there and it ran, so, okay. But then you get the call and you can't do that. But there's no question, we need someone else. Why didn't we have paper with the machine sealed in the proper manner where they tested before they went out? And that's why this is, this is not been good. Very disappointed, as you all, as they are. I don't know, other than the fact that you do have probably a hundred twenty thousand people who broke the code and got blessed for doing it. But you, I would strongly commend you to listen to your council internally. There's some things you need from the board to the bureau to the equipment you use to the continuity of the leadership down there. Because you can't keep rotating people every three months. It does not work.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna move into public comments.
I like my time modified statement because I can answer a bunch of the questions that you people are asking. I'm a sworn constable. I hold national security clearance.
Okay, we'll get you. Do any other, do any other council members have anything to say before we go into public comment? Yeah. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. R. You can. No, you can go first before the comment, that's fine.
All right. I, I would like, I would petition have my time modified because I would like you people to ans, ask the questions that you have because I was standing there and I, I can answer half these questions and I'm really trying to follow the rules here, but it's hard. I'm gonna start by finishing my closing statement from the previous public comment. So in closing, an investigation needs to be done. I am petitioning this body to use an outside federal agency like the FBI to do this. Do not have this done in Luzerne County. You have already ruined, and I'm not pointing the fingers at you guys, I'm using the term in general, the public's trust in any election you put on from this day forward. And people literally said it, and I don't mean one or two, I'm talking ten or twenty. So how do you think it's gonna go when you use, not the district attorney's office, you use some committee or something? What do you think these people are gonna say? Oh, yeah, here's the same old BS again, that's it. You need to put the best look on this you can and it has to have integrity. Whether it's right or wrong, you're not gonna get that in the eyes of the people from Luzerne County by using something inside Luzerne County. That's just, that's the fact. If, if criminal charges are warranted, they need to be pursued. And I'm gonna get to why. We need actual firings, not resignations, if there are criminal charges. Uh, we need to get rid of the voting machines. It's been said a couple of times in here and as far as I know, it is factual. Lackawanna County uses a pen and paper ballot. They had no issues and they were done at nine o'clock or nine thirty. I mean, come on. Moving on to what I did want to say in, in this, and please, if you guys have questions, ask them. You know, I'm happy to stand here and answer them. As to Mr. McGinnley and other council members' comments on here, I was there. I don't care about the compensation. I really don't. I lost a hundred grand last year, dipped into retire, retirement savings because of things that went on in my life. I couldn't give a crap about the two hundred bucks. That's not why I was there. I was there to make sure every resident in my little corner of the world, Ward Two in Larksville, who came in, had to write to cast their vote. And that didn't happen and there was nothing I could do about it. And I tried. I went to my house because I was there with him and I was there with him and I was there with him when all the Dominion crap went on about the paper and I knew it took heavy paper. And I had heavy paper at the house and we asked an elector, a citizen who was gonna cast the vote, do you mind if we use you as an experiment? And they said, what do you want to do? And we said, we're gonna have you vote on this machine because we're using non-proprietary paper. And if it doesn't work, we will spoil that ballot and you can vote on a paper provisional ballot because we didn't have any more emergency ballots. We were out and we couldn't get any. And they said, yeah, no, I'm okay with that. And we did it and it worked. And so we probably went through fifty or so people using printer paper that I brought up, thinking, okay, we're good. And people were happy that they could vote on the machine. And then we found out from a person coming in to vote who had a conversation in line with another one about running out of paper and everything like that. And we said, no, we got paper. And she said, well, is it the right paper? And we said, well, it's working. And she said, no, no, no. And she pulled up Kelsey Stroo, is that her name? News Watch sixteen? On her phone, that's how we found out you couldn't use it. From some citizen showing us a News Watch sixteen report where they're saying Luzerne County said, no, don't use that paper. So I called, which took forty-five minutes, the, the Bureau of Elections, not the board, and they said, yeah, don't, you can't do that. Who told you to do that? Who, who, what do you mean, who told me to do that? You got your disenfranchising people. It is the bedrock of this country that you get your say. That the government is responsible to you.
Thank you.
Oh, we're gonna do this again. Come on.
I, I, I gave you, I gave you an extra minute.
Whatever. Okay, it's not that important as what went on yesterday to allow the minimum amount of people left in this room to have a little bit longer comment to get their point across?
It is important, but if I do it for one person, I could do it for three hours.
You can do it five minutes for everybody. It's not the end of the world.
Ms. Sorrow? No, we can't. You, you can't do that. It's not me. It's.
There's rules.
Alyssa Fusaro.
It's her time.
Alyssa Fusaro, um, first, I thank you for, uh, allowing me to speak. I would ask that you have a little bit of patience with me because I am a little bit of punchy with, punchy with three hours of sleep.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, I'm a little punchy with about three hours of sleep. Um, first, as many of you know, election integrity was the bedrock of the reason why I decided to join the Board of Elections. Um, and had some major, uh, issues with some things that had gone on in the past here in Luzerne County, which I've lived in for a good portion of my life and experienced a lot of things here. So, and from what I've heard in the past, because I really wasn't involved in the election bureau or board, um, if the decision to put Dominion, um, had been left, to purchase Dominion machines had been left up to the board, they would have never come to fruition. Okay? And in the contract, from what I hear, because I do not have that contract, uh, it states plainly in the contract that there is no paper, required paper weight for anything. The machines, the, the printers, the scanners, nothing. It's not, it's, there's no required paper weight in there. I would ask the council, please, I am begging you to please get a com, election committee together, investigate this fully. And you will have my report as to every single thing that transpired from my end. Um, and I am also asking you to please, again, I am begging you to hire a outside lawyer to determine if the, what it says in the chi, the charter goes against state law. Because I've been sitting here reading it and it does. It's supers, they, 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 they butt heads, okay? And we're being told one thing that the charter supersedes state law and that our powers are being taken away. And you know what? If you guys can't do that, please take your power back. I don't want it. If it's not gonna be correct and according to state law, I'm begging you to dis, completely disassemble the board, election board and put it back, take your powers back and do what is right according to the law. Because at least I know, at least I know that if you guys are making the decisions, you'll take that power back on yourself. Okay? I know that you'll do that. I know that. I, 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 I feel that in my heart, that you will take that seriously. And I beg you to do that. That's the only thing I'm saying. And you guys will get a copy of my report, full report, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Mr. Rainbow?
First of all, I want to thank poll workers and the people that had to endure long hours since early morning yesterday till late at night. It wasn't easy, but I commend the people that spent all those hours on behalf of the people, for the voters, for their civic duty under the Constitution. Uh, speaking of Constitution, Article Nine, Section Two, last sentence says, "A municipal home rule charter shall not supersede the laws of the Commonwealth nor this Constitution at any time." Mr. Skeen gave an opinion during the special meeting of the purchase of the runback mail sorting machine to the contrary, saying that the charter and the administrative code supersede the election law. And that is the root cause, one of them, as to the loggerheads between the board and the bureau. Now, going to what was said as far as if you want to dis, dis, disband the election board and take it upon the, the council, the council can take that back under Title Twenty-Five, which says, and it also says it for the commissioners, three commissioners serve and two members of the public make up the composition in most of the counties in our Commonwealth. Except for some, like a few home rule counties which have their own composition. But however, those home rule counties, as I said during the last election inquiry committee, I'm sure Mr. Urban would recall, that even if the, uh, election board, despite its composition, the board still has the powers under Title Twenty-Five to make the purchases, to do the adjudication and all the powers that are prescribed to it. So I still don't understand how that convoluted charter, and I use that term very frequently in two thousand fifteen, despite the anger and contention with some of the charter drafters, present company, company excluded. But, uh, you know, they, they basically draw an ire because I say it's convoluted because you have a conflict. The charter is at conflict with state laws. Charter is at conflict with our state constitution. And the problem was, the charter was not vetted before it went to the ballot, to the voters. So that, that is the reason why we have all these problems right now. So that, that is the reason why we have all these problems right now, especially one of the main, major problems, which is elections. So I hope that this Election Inquiry Committee, and I do agree with an outside investigation if necessary. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Grantee?
I'm Joe Grantee, complaints. First of all, I'd like to thank this gentleman for staying for my question. The little bit I got out of the lengthy. Speech that he had about what he was doing was that. His business is based on making money from liens that are generated by tax delinquencies. Okay? Well, if I'm wrong, stop me, but that's what I heard. And the council is responsible to look out for the citizens and taxpayers of Luzern County. His business will make more money the more tax problems people have and the higher taxes there are. So is that a conflict of interest?
Responding, right?
No. No, did you want to just finish your public, if you have any more questions?
That was my, that was the one thing that I wanted to try and get an answer to.
Sure. I don't think any of us have an answer for you at this point in time on how that, on whether or not it's a conflict.
But I think that the council on the county would prefer that there's no tax liens. You know, we like everyone paying their taxes, so.
And I don't, personally, I don't believe it's a conflict of interest with all due respect. Because that person sitting, the company behind you, Mr. Geronimo. He has no influence on the public as to whether or not they're paying their taxes or not. That's entirely on the individual homeowners, property owners. So he's not forcing that at all. He's just standing back, whatever it is, it is.
Yeah, I understand. He's got nothing to do with, you know, the people in this county.
That's why I don't believe it's a conflict.
But I want to be more beneficial to our budget to have higher taxes and more tax problems.
Beneficial that we have higher taxes?
Yeah, I mean, just for the budget. I'm not talking about the people.
Well, how could you have higher taxes?
No. Well, I mean, people right now are having higher taxes than they can pay.
Sir, as I said.
You're saying raise taxes?
I'm not saying to raise them. I'm just saying, the higher they are, the more money that's involved in this.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, as I said before, the reason for the exploration of the monetization is so that we can not raise taxes this year.
Right, but that's because you're making an income from taxes, tax properties that have already been assessed on people.
I understand that, exactly. And if, I mean.
Tax li, tax li.
I mean, sir, if you have a solution for us to not raise taxes, then we can, we entertain that too.
I'm just saying we don't want to.
Mr. Geronimo has a response to some of that, I think.
I'm just saying we don't want to get our income from people's misery.
If I may, yeah.
Sure.
Just to help clarify. You're getting delinquent tax revenue today. Right, I understand. Without our involvement. Because the council that's still elected has the levying authority to levy taxes. They then contract with a third party to go out and collect those taxes and that generates the revenue. Right. All I'm doing, and that revenue is coming in like a dripping faucet, all I do is I turn that faucet on full blast. I have zero interaction with the taxpayers. My interaction is with the collection agency and with the council and even them, just with a few, mostly the finance team. Right. So there are no additional fees or expenses or charges put on the tax bill. So whatever the tax bill is as a result of the levy, it is what it is, literally. It's that simple. If there's a reassessment. That might change it. It might go up, it might go down. It's not supposed to, but sometimes it does. And again, it's all driven by whatever the millage is. It's that simple. Right. So selling the delinquent liens that are on the books but not being collected very fast only generates revenue that is sitting there dormant. It's already ready to be collected. It's just not being collected. So all I'm doing is accelerating those payments. We're not creating money out of thin air, if that helps you.
Thank you, Mr. Geronimo. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for saying, we appreciate it. Any other members of the public? Mr. Griffin?
First of all, we have the overpayment of the $5 fee that I wonder where we're going with that. People have been waiting over a year to get their money. They paid the money in good faith. We got the data from PennDOT and we're doing nothing with it. When are we gonna give those people their money? When we spend all the money that's in the one, the 210 fund, when all the money's gone and then we'll worry about where we get the $5 from. That needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. It's been going on since January this year. The facts are the facts in this, in this whole thing with the election. You can put lipstick on a pig, it's still pig. The fact that it matters is people couldn't vote because there was no paper. The election code does not state anywhere in there, we have to buy paper. The election code doesn't state in there, in there what kind of paper we buy. It doesn't state that in Title 25, at least not when I read it. That's leadership. Where's the leadership in this county? Why was there no paper? That's the bottom line. Why was there no paper? It's a real simple question. All of this hyperbole and all this pontificating about, well, we gotta do this. Why was there no paper? Who was in charge of that? Why didn't that not happen? That's the question this council needs to ask. And the one that we need to ask is the manager. He's the one who's responsible. The buck stops at his desk, no place else. Bob Lawton said that many times. It stops at his desk. The state doesn't say what kind of paper we can use. So why did the manager pick up the phone and call the state and speak to the man at the state? I could call him, I have his number on my phone and I would call him. Why do, why are you telling us what paper we can use? That's not your, it's not your swim lane. We could use any paper we want. But that didn't happen. So we're gonna stand here and we're gonna pontificate about all these things and try and make the thing look all the better for the people who are disenfranchised. How about the poor candidates that spent millions and hundreds of millions of dollars? Bogged that, worked his tail off and lost the election. Was it because Luzern County dropped the ball? Who knows? Is that fair to him? No. How about Aaron Harvey? Worked hard, tried to beat Mr. Piscian, or yeah, Eddie Dave Piscian. Is it fair to her that she lost the election because we couldn't do our job as a county by buying paper? Really? Paper? As simple as paper? Why is that not the accountable issue here? That's what council needs to know. Why did somebody not buy paper? What's the problem? All the other stuff? No customer service? We have people from the Bureau of Elections standing there, not answering the phone. They're that busy, they can't answer the phone for election workers who are having a problem? Really? That's customer service? Where's the leadership? Where is the leadership? There is none. Yeah, Beth is responsible. So is Emily Cook. But so is the manager. Why didn't he stand in front of the press and make an announcement? That didn't happen either.
Thank you.
I'm tired of this.
Any members in the public? All right, if not here, we have Ms. Hartman with her hand up. Beth?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Elizabeth Hartman, I've tried six times. I was not unmuted. I think that is a disgrace that you can't unmute somebody that's trying to talk. So I had to sit through this whole meeting so I can speak my words. The last night when I found out that they had to stay until 10 o'clock, I took my car and I went back to my polling station. And I talked to my polling workers and I asked them, was there something I could go to get them to eat or drink or some coffee? To help them through the next two hours that they were going to sit there and help fix this debacle. When we were hiring a manager for this county, the ones that voted for the one that just put his tail between his legs. And trying to run out the door with, he's gonna resign. Hell no, he ain't gonna resign. You're gonna fire his ass. So that he can't walk away with no golden parachute, okay? He didn't do his job. He's trying to keep the controller from doing his job, telling the DA to do this job. We're tired of corruption in this county. We voted you people in for change. We didn't get change. We got more screwed up crap. This is ridiculous. So don't accept his resignation where he's getting another golden parachute of $159,000. Put his frigging contract out online. He wanted people hired at prices we can't afford. He wants to hire our budget and now he's gonna put his tail between his legs and go running home. I got six family members. The pay that we're paying him, let him hire some people to take care of his family and do his frigging job. Or fire his ass and get him the hell out of here.
Please stop cursing. Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Motion to adjourn.
All favor? Somebody with the hand up? You're muted, but they allowed you permission to unmute.
Start silence.
Start, say this, you're on the phone, no, they're. We have a motion to adjourn, ten seconds, all favor? Abstentions, opposed, meaning adjourned, good night.